Hey, good evening, everyone, welcome Harrisburg City Council work session. Today is Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. I am condescending to order at 5:30 PM. Mr. Petrowski, are you on for today?
I am.
Would you please do the roll call?
Sure. Mr. Allott?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present.
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Daniels? Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Madison? Mr. Madison just texted me, he said he's trying to get on right now, so.
Okay.
He should be on shortly. Mr. Majors? Ms. Williams?
Here. There were some problems getting on the internet today, so we'll give him a couple minutes before. But before we begin, while we're waiting on him, please join me in a moment of silence, please. Diane King. Thank you, everyone. Got Mr. Madison? Mr. Allen, would you want to begin with the committee business, committee? This Mr. Madison is running late.
Sure. Why don't we jump?
Pardon me?
Go ahead. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, I'll move on to Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Allen.
Thanks, and we will, when Mr. Madison joins, we can jump back over to it. But Mark, are you on to discuss mid-year budget review? Or is that coming from the mayor?
I'm on.
Oh, all right, thanks, Mark. So, just wanted to kind of give a quick update to, I know when we started the discussion last week during legislative session, we mentioned that the, that I wanted some review between the Controller's Office and the administration. Thank you all for meeting in the past week and working it out. I think we have numbers that everyone is in agreement with and all those details have come into place. Mark, did you see the email I sent to you? I had just requested a breakdown of year-to-date budgets for like safety. Is that something you can send to me?
I met with folks over the past week. I think we're prepared to send it to you sometime tomorrow, if that works.
Okay, perfect, that's just what I want to do. I do, since I've had all my questions kind of addressed and answered, I really just want to open up for questions from my colleagues on any questions that they have, since we got it last week and had a chance hopefully to review it. So I will start kind of on my screen in terms of who's closest up to my left. Councilmember Daniels, do you have any questions on the mid-year budget report at this time?
Yes, so I'm assuming what's on the drive is the most current version. So could you explain, in the summary, the summary says the 1 million operating deficit, but then the numbers in the deficit say 2 million. Is that a typo or is there a different source of revenue that I'm missing?
So can you ask, you broke up, so I.
I was saying, in the summary of the presentation, the projected deficit is a million, but then in the numbers, the projected deficit is 2 millions. So I was wondering if that was a typo or if there's a source of revenue that I'm misreading.
No, I think we're projecting 2.8 million dollars lower in the general fund expenses, and then we're having a million dollar in the operating deficit before the transfers for the AMBAC. For the mayor's liability.
Okay, see, okay. And then the other, you know, one of the things of this summary is I don't really get a sense of, are you all in a position to kind of really explain what those salary freezes mean in terms of services to residents? Like what did we, what did we freeze to kind of try to keep our budget in balance?
So what we did is that, in acknowledgement of the pandemic and early on, the mayors rightfully saw that the revenues may be impacted by that, we wanted to freeze our hiring. We did that, we went to a modified schedule for those folks that were not in police, fire, and sanitation. So we wanted to make sure that all of our city services were still being met, and they were. So there were, besides the limited access to City Hall and some of the codes department and Treasury, which amended their schedule, we still were able to meet the needs of the residents, albeit on a different schedule.
And then were there, between now and the end of the year, what are we anticipating won't happen or we won't be able to deliver in order to try to keep these numbers as, these deficits as small as possible?
Well, we are, we're, you know, this is really new territory for all municipalities, states, and even the federal government in terms of trying to project revenues to the end of the year. In this document, we did as best as we could, looking, taking a snapshot as of June 30th as to where revenues were. We are trying, and the mayor is adamant about trying not to impact city services as much as possible, and I think we've held true to that. I think there are some things we can't do because of social distancing protocols, but even in some of our events that we've held, we've held a hybrid type event where we still have some of the amenities available, as long as we're socially distant and we can remain safe. So we're taking that into account with regard to how we provide city services at City Hall. City Hall now is open from 8:30 to 2:30, and we're hopeful that people can conduct business during those times. And after 2:30, we're taking that time to really ensure that the building is clean and safe for everybody for the next day of business.
Thank you. Oh, and that's generally affirmative, thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Bowers.
Thank you, I just have one question. In relation to the cleaning, Mr. Willie, that you just mentioned, I know we discussed it briefly a few weeks ago, but have our employees received any formal training or certification in COVID cleaning or preparation? If you could just share what they're doing to clean the building, that's my.
Sure, I think that we've bought new equipment, and I, hopefully, Dave Baker's on, because he is really spearheading this effort with his reports. But we have new equipment that they've had to learn how to operate. We were on modified schedules in terms of when we clean high-traffic areas. We have instituted where we have to sign in so that they're aware of the areas that will be used during the day. But Dave, I think it's a more pointed question about how we are educating our staff on how to use the cleaning materials that you've purchased. I don't know if I can see if he's on or not. Kirk, is Dave on?
I don't see Dave on.
I don't think so.
Yeah, he's not, Mark, not yet.
So I can, I'll make sure that we follow up with you on that question, but I know that in particular, we bought a number of different atomizer machines. We use those on hard surfaces in the various facilities. We also have hard atomizers that we use in VMC for the cars. It's difficult with the police officers, because those cars are hot seats, where they from shift to shift. But I know VMC, under the direction of Aaron, takes that very seriously, and they've instituted a new cleaning campaign for their cars that are being used, fleet cars, and also the trucks. And with regard to the one particular machine that I'm referencing from Clorox that we bought to atomize it for the hard surfaces, there was training that was given by the manufacturer, and also because Dave had certain training himself, and he could train the trainer. So, but with specifics as to each individual employee, I'll have to circle back to you after I speak to Dave to get more specific about that.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to just sort of elaborate on what cleaning is being done, so the public is aware. I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Bowers, Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Vice President Allott. I don't have many questions. My question kind of goes into the hiring freezes and furloughs. As we are implementing those, what process do we have to bring those employees back or ensure those positions get filled in a timely manner that need to be filled, so we don't have any interruption of service? Or ensure that the employees who are still there aren't taking too much of a workload on?
So I'm happy to report that although we had a furlough, it was a limited time period. We brought all the codes, folks back, they're back and working. All the positions the mayor has unfrozen, and we are actively recruiting each position. We have not experienced in terms of customer service, much interruption. I think the interruptions we've had, again, have been in the parks and setting up for those type events that would not, would not be able to, we would not be able to socially distance appropriately. And the events that I mentioned, that we had to scale down. But the mayor, a few weeks ago, gave the green light to start to open, to unfreeze all positions and to recruit. And we've been doing that, and Joni and her crew have been interviewing diligently since the mayor gave the green light.
Thank you. Another question that I have, I know a lot of companies are facing challenges with people working from home and with their student, their children now going to school from home. Are we providing any accommodations to our employees to ensure that they're able to continue to work, even with them maybe having to work with their students home throughout the school year?
Well, we are very cognizant of the new COVID FMLA laws, and so where necessary, we're implementing those stopgaps for employees. In addition, the mayor had the foresight early on, before, this pre-COVID, to entertain a policy change in terms of looking at telecommuting. So we were well positioned to afford all employees that could, based on their supervisor's recommendation in this pandemic phase, to telecommute where possible. And once this pandemic has subsided, we're going to pull that back. But during this time, we have been very flexible with employees with regard to their ability to telecommute. We're doing our part in making sure that we socially distance where appropriate to keep our employees and our residents safe.
Thank you, those are the only questions I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Green. Not that I want to be the bearer of bad news on this, Mark, but I just saw some guidance today on the expanded FMLA and the qualifications for it, for parents who have online instruction for their children. If their kids are able to be in the classroom and they opted for the online education, they may not qualify for the expanded FMLA under some guidance that just came out. So don't shoot the messenger on that.
My wife just sent me an email and I didn't read it, I should have read it, but I.
So, so having said that, the remote work option, when possible, is a better one, not to have to put people in that position of whether or not they would qualify for it or not.
Yes.
So, sorry to be a bearer of bad news, but I actually just got that guidance today. Moving over to Councilmember Majors.
Hear me?
Your volume's a little low.
Test, 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 is that better?
A little bit better. You just might have to speak up a bit.
Okay, yes. So one of the questions I had, so, understanding where we are mid-year and the revenue projections aren't looking very, I guess there are some positive measures there, since we did take some steps previously to try and right-size our government. I see where we are mid-year, what, how are we feeling about 2021? So I know how we're going to get to see where we are now and what potential changes may need to be made to our budget moving forward. But how are we looking in terms of projecting for 2021? Understanding that many of the revenues may still go way, way below our projected estimates in terms of parking and folks actually working in the city, since it looks like teleworking may be in place for longer than we may anticipate.
So I, I'm not going to pull punches on this one. I'm concerned about 2021. We are going to sit down and go over the numbers as they keep being updated and see if we can project into 2021. No, I have no analysis right now, but I do have concerns about the revenue. And, you know, this pandemic still is impacting those revenues. But looking for good modeling, so I can present to the mayor and council some numbers that are based off of, you know, models that other municipalities and states may be using, but knowing that we are unique in our financial condition. But we're going to, over the next few weeks, we're going to be working to look to analyze 2020 in terms of projections. But I do have concerns.
Yeah, and so with the continued, with our projections still being below estimate, I know you, I know even in the executive summary and the narrative, a lot of the austerity measures that have been taken previously. So should we still need to look at additional potential cuts in our budget if we're not able for 2020? So just for this year, where, what are those potential sources of either services or positions that may have to, we may have to take a look at? You know, understanding that we're looking at hiring right now, but you know, the revenue projections, while not as severe as some other municipalities, I mean, we're still looking at a few million dollar shortfall moving forward.
Well, and I know this is not the answer you probably want to hear, but we're really not prepared to talk about the projections for 2021 right now, only because, you know, the information's still coming in. Going to obviously have to sit down with the team and look to see if it will be necessary to make any cuts. I don't foresee that right now, but, you know, it's something that we always have to be prepared for, but not, not at this point, am I prepared to talk about cuts without having all the requisite information?
Okay, because I mean, to me, looking through this, even though, you know, we're showing some positive points in the budget, some of it is also said is due to the timing of payment. So what additional payments need to be made through the end of the year? And how would that affect the revenues and projections for 2020?
Well, for us, we've already baked in a lot of the payments. Take, for instance, you know, we're looking at, you know, hopefully striking an agreement with AMBAC. So that's, that payment, whatever that may be, you know, we anticipate it to be at a certain level. So that's baked in. We have some other capital expenditures that we baked into the budget already, and we are, we are prepared to meet those obligations. I think that, you know, we have, over the next few weeks, we have to look continually at the revenue sources and see if any commitments that we have, you know, what we want to do with those. But again, you know, I'd want to sit down with the team, sit down with the mayor, and go over those based on, you know, what we're going to have in the next few weeks in terms of revenue projections.
Okay, and then a question, not directly, well, I guess it's sort of budget-related. In terms of where we are, have we been able to, I guess, provide and/or allocate PPE to members of the staff, particularly our public safety folks and codes, our public safety and our public works teams?
Yes, without question. And Dave Baker, along with Aaron and Chief Ederline and Commissioner Carter, have all the PPE supplies that they require. We have made the requisite buys, and we have, we have supplies on hand to distribute in case of police at roll call, in the case of public works, before their days begin. And during the day, Dave is continually asking those in City Hall and in other departments if they have all the supplies that they need.
Okay, and then my last question, along those same lines. Is there a policy in place for our police department in terms of wearing PPE and/or for the city? So I don't know about other members, but I've received several questions from members of the community who end up, if they are interacting with the police or they see the police interacting with members of the public, that they are not wearing any personal protective equipment, masks, et cetera. So just want to know if there is a policy in place at, for the city in terms of how PPE should be worn, who needs to wear, and if they're interacting with the public, do they need to practice any of the measures from guidelines CDC has recommended?
We do have a policy, and I know that, I'm aware of some of the issues that you speak of. I'm meeting, we're meeting with the police department tomorrow, we're going to talk about that. And I know we've addressed it, we're going to reinforce the need for all employees to, when they're involved in situations where you cannot socially distance, that they should be wearing their PPE and abiding by that. So we'll address the acute issue that you mentioned, but in terms of our policy, it's a, it's a well-documented policy that's been reaffirmed in each of our departments, particularly in fire, police, and sanitation in order to keep the workers safe and the public safe.
Okay, that concludes my questions for now, thank you, President.
And if I could jump in for a quick second, I just want to address the issue with masks and the police. We have reiterated that requirement, and it has gone from the command staff to each of the, each of the patrols. So they have been informed of that requirement. I know there were, there was some concern in the community about police officers not wearing masks, but that requirement has been reaffirmed. And Councilman Majors, I just wanted to add to Mark's presentation to say that while we are projecting for 2020, about a million dollars in deficit, I think we will easily close that gap by the end of the year, given that there's still a lot of expenses that we do control and that we won't be spending. They're not projected in the sense that they're authorized in the budget, but we, for instance, by now, opening the pools this year, we are probably going to save a half million dollars right there. So there's still, there's still expenses that we can control outside of revenue and outside of personnel that we're carefully monitoring, and we hope, we hope to leave 2020 without a projected deficit. But those are the numbers as they are right now, if no other changes were to be made. 2021's a different story. We're actively engaged in our budget meetings, and we'll, we'll have more information on that. We're not quite prepared to put forth projections for 2021, but it is going to be a difficult year. But 2020, I think we're carefully, carefully managing, and I think we're going to have revenues aligned with expenses by the end of the year.
Okay, and that's great, man, I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the work that, you know, members of the administration are doing to ensure that we are going to have as close to, you know, a balanced budget moving forward for 2020. Again, as you mentioned, my concern, recognizing where we currently are, is going to be 2021 and moving forward. I know you can't give them this projection now, but, you know, we have to manage our expectations truly and ensure that the public, while we are in a position to have as close to a balanced budget as we can, that also is requiring us to, you know, move around some money, make some, some changes and have to make some difficult decisions now. But 2021 could potentially bring even more difficult decisions. So that's, that's the only point I was just trying to make. So I do recognize the work that you guys are doing, and we appreciate it.
The only thing I would say to add to that, just briefly, is that we are fortunate, through careful management, all of us, to have built up a sizable fund balance. And that's going to see us through 2021 regardless of what COVID-19 ends up doing. So I don't think our residents have anything to fear in terms of reduction in services or any type of crisis that would impact quality of life issues in 2021 due to the good and conservative financial planning we've made up to this point.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Majors. Just a follow-up question. If I recall, we usually saw a huge portion of the tax revenue at the conclusion of Q3, which was kind of catch-ups from Q1 and Q2. Have we done any analysis to know, you know, how to even estimate what that might be for us coming into this year, knowing that the bulk of the shutdown occurred in Q2? Has there been any analysis or perform a look at what we might expect to receive as part of that at this point?
So we are continuing monitoring that, but I think in terms of, you know, forecasting, I think it's, we received most of our revenue earlier in terms of some of the tax collection. I think the tax collection, we are looking to see, and we have to sit down and analyze is what we're going to be getting in the first, first two quarters of 2021. We're looking to model that now, and I'm actually, I have a meeting on Friday to do that, so we'll continue to keep council updated on that.
Right, thank you. Council President Williams, any questions from you on the mid-year budget review?
No, thank you, Mr. Allen. No, I don't have any questions on the budget, because I've already, you know, discussed that. But I do have a question, Mark, when I see that we have a shortfall in the parking revenue. We just installed 38 new spaces on North Sixth Street. I have been in, correspond with the standard parking. When are we going to be installing those parking meters to, will for the gain revenue from that?
Is Wayne on? Maybe the mayor can answer that.
I can answer it in the sense that those meters have to come to council for your approval, and if they're not coming for the next legislative session. And if they're not coming for the next legislative session, I would be surprised. I don't know if Neil's on. But we we've been trying to expedite that, and I've had conversations with. SP, and I agree that revenue from those spaces is important. It's not going to change, however, the overall dynamic of the parking. One of the the shocking. Things in this midyear report is the decline in parking revenue generally for the system. It's. It's so bad for the system that the system is not covering its its bond payments, and they're not projecting. Parking revenues really of any sort for us for next year. So the the parking parking issue is is probably the single issue which has the largest financial impact on the city. And to which the original strong plan was so deeply connected to parking, it's it's going to be very, very hard, and there's no. No short term prospect to replace it. But Neil's here, so can Neil, can you say when that's coming?
I I think based on your opening statements, or it'll you'll be surprised, so. Because it's still under review, but it has to be reviewed by two levels, what we were told over at the state before we could send it to council. So they have to go through the the contractor who manages the system and then Ped for themselves. So it's just a it's just a bureaucratic question at the moment, but it should be down by October. So.
Yeah, is there is there a way that we can do mobile? At that area? On North Sixth Street?
Did you say mobile app, Madam President?
Yes.
We we do it elsewhere. I'd leave back to the mayor. He's he's managed to negotiate that previously.
Yeah, we discussed mobile only, but I think SP is they have meters that they'd like to move into that area. And and we are in favor of metering these new spaces. So what Neil's indicating is that PEDFA. The State Oversight Board has to review and approve. Approve the move of those meters, and it's it's not the city which is holding up the transfer of those meters.
I thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Madam President.
And I do see that Councilmember Mattson has joined. Dave, we jumped to the midyear budget review and we'll come back to your. Resolution after this, but did you have any questions regarding the budget midyear budget review at this point?
Mr. Mattson?
You there, Dave?
I think we lost him again, Mr. Allen.
Hello?
You're there, Dave.
Yeah, there he is.
Sorry about that, everybody. I have a technical issue today. Yeah, I'll submit my questions in writing. I was. Kind of caught off guard here with all these technical issues, but I will submit some questions in writing. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Council President, I will turn it back over to you or to Councilmember Mattson to reconvene the Community Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Mr. Mattson, are you ready to convene the Economic Development Committee?
I will try my best, given the circumstances. So if I cut out or there's an issue, President Williams, would you mind carrying on in my stead?
Sure, you will.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, I'm ready then. I just one moment. Can we read the resolution into the minute?
Sure, Resolution 20 of 2020 is a resolution approving the revised. Lot consolidation and preliminary final land development plans submitted by Eric Dar on behalf of Harrisburg University to construct a new 11-story. Institutional building consisting of university classrooms and a service unit.
Okay, the applicant president?
Yes, Mr. Dar is here. I mean, Dr. Dar, I'm sorry, apologize.
Okay, welcome, Dr. Dar.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity tonight.
Okay, Flora is here to go over the present the. Land development plan.
I believe the land development plan in detail was presented to the Planning Commission. Back in March. Nothing has changed from that period of time. In terms of our intent. In high level, it's an 11-story mixed academic building, meaning the two principal. Academic areas will be health sciences and healthcare, as well as advanced manufacturing. The building will support somewhere between 1,500 and 2,000 new students. As well as. 70 to 80 new full-time jobs here in the city. And the lot itself has been prepared pre-pandemic, pre the. Stoppage of construction activities. So the. Site is now ready for construction. Which we anticipate beginning first week in October. And that's that's a high level summary of of where we are.
Okay, thank you for that. Now, you mentioned that you were planning to start in October. Is there a time sensitivity with this? That council should be aware of when it comes to approving this resolution?
Yes, I appreciate that that question. The timing is such that if we're able to begin construction in October of 2020. Then we will be able to complete construction. At least of the nursing facilities. In the building for opening of fall 2022. If we delay much beyond October of this year. Then the building itself will probably not be available for classwork until 2023. And in essence, the university will lose an academic year. Of of student use for that building. So the timing is actually very important. To begin construction in October.
Okay, thanks for that. Now, I know when council discussed this some time ago. You had your contractor university. There was a lot of outreach. I attended a few meetings as well. Now the project's been scaled back a little bit. Will there still be opportunities for local contractors? To potentially bid on the project, and can you maybe go over some of your outreach plans?
Um, the the short answer is absolutely yes. There will be. Apple ample opportunity, and and as you said, we've done outreach, and we will continue to do additional outreach. For contracting and work on the project itself. White, if you may remember, Whiting Turner is the construction manager. On the project and is operating. With resources here in Hershey that are familiar with Central PA. They're familiar with many of the subcontractors here in the region. And have done outreach themselves. The university has made it clear to Whiting Turner that. We will look to. Not only the subcontractor packages, the contracts, but also the use of local labor on the project itself. As an important aspect moving forward. The major packages that were bid. Mostly around site work in the springtime will be rebid and reverified this fall. I would say core and shell packages will follow in late fall and winter, and then finished packages to include. Painting, drywall, those sorts of activities will be bid. Sometime in 2021. As the. Design for some of the fit out. Is completed that period of time. I don't know, Diane Takarski, who I know is on the call, do you want to elaborate on some of the outreach activities?
Certainly. Whiting Turner, as you recall, hosted a like town hall and and to gather information for participants. They are reaching back out to everybody who connected with us the first go around, and they are also putting together. Zoom meetings, team meetings to try to partner some of the subcontractors with smaller companies to make sure that. People get experience and to grow their book of business.
Great, and Diane, while I have you here, I'll just, you know, for the record, President Williams and I met with you, just to. Preliminary to just get an update on the project and some of the ideas that we had discussed in terms of outreach is coordinating with. Our small business coordinator Jamal. I don't know if he's on the call to maybe talk a little bit about some strategies in terms of outreach and using or activating his. Masters list of local contractors that he he has access to. I know that we had talked about the importance of the main contractor, Whiting Turner. Being willing to be accessible and working with those smaller contractors who may have some issues with. Bidding or or some issues with equipment and. That you said that they would be open to working with some of our smaller contracts that may have issues. And. Any and all opportunities that we can help promote on the council side to promote the Zoom meeting strongly encouraged. To meet with the contractor so we can get it out to those that may be interested in bidding or being involved with the project. And then something we had talked about potentially is notifying the public, using some of the tactics we used during. The COVID-19 shutdown, that's sending out information through the trash bills. So if there's opportunities. For a Zoom meeting or people have questions regarding the project that maybe potentially have to coordinate with the administration. On using those similar tactics, I think they were effective. And would like to coordinate with the administration on goals with my colleagues in terms of what we'd like to see in terms of local participation and seeing if we can improve upon that. So. Those are just some asides or some points in a strategy that we kind of brainstormed with President Williams. So. With that, I don't have anything else to ask or add. I just wanted to get everybody up to speed. And I will open it up unless there's any other comments from the presenters. I'll open it up to questions for my colleagues. Okay, great. All right. Well, I will. First person will be Councilwoman Green.
Thank you, Councilmember Mattson. I really don't have any questions. I had the opportunity to ask a lot of questions during the Planning Commission meeting. When Harrisburg University presented this information to us. So thank you very much. I look forward to seeing the project come to fruition. I know it will bring great service to our community, and if we need anything, please feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Bauer?
Thank you. I have just two questions. So we mentioned the use of local labor, but do you all have any benchmarks in mind for minority participation on this project?
We have not established benchmarks. We, as you recall from the first time around and working with Contractor University. We're trying to develop businesses. We're trying to expand on that strategy this time around. And and to the extent possible, have people subcontract with some of the bigger packages. For like the painting and everything to or hire the employees to give them the experience. So we're trying to take a little different tactic this time. To get more people employed and engaged in the project.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question is, if construction potentially would begin in October. When would be either Zoom or in-person meeting with the primary contractor be held?
They they have already been reaching out to people that we connected with the last go around and got their information. So. It is a constant effort on the part of Whiting Turner to connect with those people as the. They're busy right now trying to to get together numbers and everything to get us started in October. But as the design develops, as Dr. Dar explained, that will set up the timeframes. So I would anticipate that those meetings will probably not start until late September, early October, until we get a little further along in the design process.
Okay, and so. You are mentioning a meeting, a public meeting as well, or is this just for?
You you know, with COVID, you know, the the last time we rented out the Dixon Center and hosted a meeting. And and we actually had very good participation in that room. We would be violating everything doing that again. So we're we're looking to see if we can do it as Zoom. And as the councilman explained, we would work with Jamal to make sure that the city helps us. Market that to get as much participation as as possible.
Okay, and I apologize. I did mean via Zoom. Wouldn't want you to violate. Any restrictions. So that's all I have. I would just continue to echo a minority participation. If you have to get very innovative, I know. That would be greatly appreciated moving forward, and then I would also encourage the Zoom meeting with the public as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
President William?
I don't have any questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Mattson. As you stated earlier, I have already been in conversation with Ms. Diane and Dr. Dar. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Allen?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Majors?
Hello, sorry. Thank you. So. Not too many questions. I think some of my other council members asked the questions that I had, but. Yeah, I'm I'm I am really can just want to make sure that the timeline. To be able to get additional folks to participate. It's followed. It does seem like you guys have a short, a small window here to get everything up and going after the revisions that you made to. To the plan to scale it down. So would encourage you really to do as much outreach as you can. Are are any of the. Bidding requirements or any of the documentation available yet, or you're still waiting to make those things available to potential contractors and or vendors?
No. No, nothing, nothing yet is available in terms of bid documentation. And so I would say that, you know, we do have time while. I had mentioned, we'd hope to start the foundation. Site construction in in October. Much of the. Rest of the bidding will follow for several months after that, and so we will have ample opportunity to outreach and. To make sure that the bid packages are well understood, and that if there's opportunity to. You know, break some of the bigger packages into smaller things, as Diane talked about, that we have time and the ability to do that as well. To encourage as much local participation as possible.
Yeah, great. And then since it is scaled down, and forgive me if this has already been made public knowledge. But what does what is the the total construction cost looking like now? So I know you guys went from a 19-story building down to 11. There was some hotel potential there, and now you're looking to sort of change the education to more. Advanced manufacturing. So I just want to know what the what the spend is looking like now for the project.
Yeah, great question. Just to refresh everyone's remembering of things. So. Before, when it was a it was a taller building. Part of it did include a hotel, and the hotel part is going to bring its own monies to the to the construction. And the university. Had anticipated raising $100 million in bond offerings, and that's still the number. That that we're looking to raise here at the end of September, beginning of October through a bond transaction. The construction spend will probably be somewhere between 85 and 90 million with the remainder of the bond proceeds covering closing costs and equipment and other sorts of things. Actually, in the, moving from a 19-story to an 11-story building, the educational space that'll be available has gone up by 20,000 or 30,000 square feet because of the redesign and more efficient use of the floor plates. So in essence, the university and the community and the city are getting more educational space for our monies.
Okay, great. Thank you. No further questions at this time.
Okay, Councilman Daniel?
I believe they were already answered.
Okay. And it was touched on in Councilman Majors' Q and A. And Mr. Dar, you kind of mentioned it is the bond. I guess, are we, you said, you mentioned you're having a meeting here in September. Are you, how confident are you that you will secure the bond and the funding for the project?
Well, you know, I'm always, you know, the most nervous of any of us. I'll tell you, our bankers and underwriters at RBC feel that now is actually quite a good time for this bond offering. So given their sense of confidence, I feel pretty good about us being able to close on the funding in the next six weeks or so.
Okay, and I guess just for the public's awareness, if you were not able to secure the bond, what would happen then?
The project would remain on hold until alternative funding or another round of potential bond offering. The market could change. So those are some of the considerations as we move forward. But as I say, right now, every indication is that we'll be successful. We've already had some preliminary meetings with potential investors in the bonds who are quite interested in the project, quite interested in the region and in the city of Harrisburg and believe in its future and think that these tax-exempt bonds are attractive for their portfolios. So fingers crossed, but things look good right now.
Okay. All right. Well, does anybody else have any further questions? Okay. I know that this got put on the agenda later last week. And I was able to send out a summary of sort of some of the strategy that we had discussed. So I just want to give my colleagues an opportunity to digest the strategy specifically on the minority participation. I know that's going to be very important from the community. So I just want to give them a little bit of time to review it and send any feedback they may have before formally moving it on the agenda. So if my colleagues could just review it over the next few days, I'll be reaching out individually just to pick your brains to make sure that we have an agreed strategy moving forward to hit some of these minority participation goals. And then we'll move forward with putting on the agenda. So formally, I'm just saying putting a hold now just so I can solidify and get that feedback. But then we'll look to move forward, given that we know that there is some time sensitivity with the project as soon as we have that agreed strategy or feedback. And so that's it for me.
Councilman Mattson?
Yep.
I'm just trying to get a clarification because tonight is when we make the notice that it's moving on. So I'm trying to see if the strategies were this week, would you still be looking at next week? Because we probably want to put something contingently on the record as it is tonight. You know, that contingency could happen. I'm not saying it should happen or will happen. But otherwise, the normal assumption would be it wouldn't be for two weeks till after next Tuesday.
Okay, help me with a verbiage, Neil. Pretty much what I'm trying to say is I would like to give my colleagues an opportunity to just review the NWBE strategy and when they're, and just get their feedback and give them sufficient time in order to do so. So can I move it forward with the contingent that there, that I have some time to get that feedback?
Absolutely. You could, you could move it to some next week's agenda pending the receivable of the feedback from council on the issues that you've raised.
Yes, that's what I would like to do.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Moving on to Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Allen?
Thank you so much. All right, back to you, Budget and Finance Committee meeting. Up for discussions, Resolution 63 of 2020. Kirk, would you go ahead and read that into record?
Sure. Chair Allen, you did receive a public comment regarding the mid-year budget. If you want to hear it now or wait until public comment, that's fine. I can move on.
Yeah, let's just wait to public comment and put them all together.
Sounds good. Resolution 63 of 2020 is a resolution ratifying a contract amendment between the City of Harrisburg and Marsh and McLennan Agency to provide aid to the city in the development and management of a request for proposals to solicit new pricing and vendors for its medical prescription, dental, vision, and life insurance programs.
Very good. And who from the administration wants to speak to this resolution?
I will. It's been a few years, maybe more than a few years, since we've, the city have looked to put our health and health benefits out in our RFP. It's clear from my colleagues in other cities that, you know, the market has changed. And this is a good time for us to really put our portfolio out there for bid. It seems that with my discussions, there could be significant savings. And in order to do this, because of the timeframe, we're looking for January 1 renewal. And also that we knew that COVID was impacting our revenues. It looked like a great opportunity to see if we could get some savings in addition to the reduced uses that we currently have. So in order to do this in the timeframe and do it with the expertise, we're relying on Marsh to help us kind of navigate those waters. These are very technical documents in terms of the RFPs themselves and also the responses. And we want to ensure that we are able to really comb through those responses. And the best way to do that was really to expand a relationship that we have with Marsh already. And they stood ready to do that. And we needed to get, in order to be aligned for January 1 renewal, in order to get these on the street and have enough time for the respondents to submit their proposals and for us to be able to review them. We signed them on and we expect to see significant savings both on the medical side and the pharmaceutical side.
Mark, just kind of a quick question. So is Marsh viewed as kind of like a broker on record or they just use to kind of be the intermediary to shop around?
They are not the broker of record. They are using a subsidiary called Tryon to help us with this specific task.
Gotcha. And have we done it like this in the past? And the only reason I ask because the, this is new to me and it could just be because I haven't done a lot with self-insured programs specifically. Is it common to have someone handle this portion of the process and then hand it over to a broker on record?
So what we've done is that we have combined where we put the notice on. We've developed the RFP in conjunction with Tryon and Marsh. And they are really marketing it for us as well as having our notice on pen bid. For, I've done these RFPs a number of times in the past. And typically, I've done them in conjunction with having a broker of record. Since we have been self-insured and we had gone to the market ourselves, this seemed like a necessary hybrid model to go to, you know, before we venture down the road of enlisting the services of a broker, which of course we would do with council guidance.
Now, with part of the services that they would offer as part of this process to help set up the initial kind of negotiating landscape for what we would expect to pay by way of both a broker and the healthcare we receive or?
The main thrust of, it's twofold. One is to make sure that our RFP was in such order that it would be understood by the market. Two, wanted them to market this as broadly as possible because we wanted to cast a wide net in order to make sure that, one, we were able to get apples for apples in terms of the benefits we currently offer our employees and make sure that they, whatever responses we get were in line with those. And really to make sure that once we receive the responses, that we are in a position to evaluate.
Just for a point of clarification, who is our current broker on record and who's our current carrier on record?
We do not have a broker. And currently, we have, I just had a mind freeze. It's a blue, Neil, which I don't have my benefits series.
Hi, Mark.
Hi, Mark. Yes, sorry.
All right, I will. I'm going to open up to questions.
Better card for the prescription, yes.
I might want to, if we could have an offline conversation about it as well. I've been doing some benefit renewals for some clients of mine and finding some interesting things out doing so. So if you don't mind, I can reach out to you on the side at some point to discuss.
I'd love to have your input.
All right, perfect. I'm going to open up to questions. Let's start with Council President Williams.
Thank you. Mark, would this be, are you looking to change carriers because of the increase of services, medical services that we provide to our employees?
I have to tell you that I have no preconceived notion. I'm really looking to ensure that we are getting value for our dollar. And so the RFP itself is really open-ended in terms of what they will offer as any value-add components. But really, the driving force behind this is to see where we are in the marketplace and make sure that we are priced appropriately.
Well, see, I'm just concerned about the impact of whatever vendor we choose that it doesn't cost the city employees additional funding, you know, for that benefit.
We have the option of.
Because it has increased over the years.
Yes, so I think that in order to know where we are in the market, we really have to do this periodically. The underlying, the foundation of this RFP is to ensure that by doing this, we're not impacting the current benefits that we're offering our retirees or our current employees. If we receive responses that vary greatly from the benefits that they currently receive, we would quite possibly demure.
Okay, I would hope that you don't, that they would give us maybe one or two to kind of look at those coverages and see what it would, the impact would be on the employees, not just to select one and go with that final vendor.
We, so it's been on, the RFP has been on the street for about a week now. So we have recent, we have acknowledgement that three big carriers have expressed interest and have acknowledged receipt. So we are anticipating that we will at least have three companies bid on it.
Will we have an opportunity to look at those before you? Pardon me?
As soon as the field is rounded out and we've closed for the bids, we'll inform you of the bids.
Well, how will this affect negotiations that we already have in place? I mean, agreements that we already have in place. Because some of them are extended to the point of the next two years and some of it extended for another three years. So collecting another assurance brokerage to do a vendor outreach for benefits. How would that impact the negotiation that you already have in place at this point?
So currently, one of the mandates of the RFP is that there is no reduced benefit to our current employees. It has to be an apples for apples. And if it differs, there would be a value add. Of course, we'd have to discuss that with our unions. But if it's a value add at no cost to us, I don't anticipate a problem, but I'm not going to say there wouldn't be.
Oh, there's going to be a problem, especially when you go to new brokerage, insurance brokerage and yourself insured. There's certainly going to be an increase in some of the benefits and it's going to be a cost to the union employees.
There shouldn't be.
Yeah, I don't.
It depends on.
There should not be.
It should not, but sometimes in some cases it does. So that's why, that was my question, when we already have the contractual agreement in place, what impact will it be on the union employees as well as management?
Well, we, so we started this out and it's baked into the RFP that the current benefits that are retirees, current employees, both those represented and non-represented, will not see an impact in service. That is, that is the first premise of this RFP. We are, like I said, what we're really trying to do is see where we placed, see where we are placed in the market and see if we are, we are priced appropriately.
Okay, where is that in the RFP? Am I looking at Appendix A? Is that Appendix 2? Because I don't see it either place. Where it is in the RFP?
I don't have the RFP in front of me, but I will, I will review it and send you the RFP with that section.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just to assure your concerns, the RFP even resulted in a different carrier would not allow us to not honor the full agreements we have with each of the unions on their benefits. So we would, they would have the same benefits. It would be how we're paying for them that's different.
Okay, so it'd be no increase to them on their benefit?
We have an obligation to honor the contract.
Although you have an obligation, it's one of those things, sometimes things do change, Neil. And then you would have the unions, you know, coming back to the City of Harrisburg regarding these contractual agreements that you've already had in place. It's a known factor that they could reopen for that purpose. You've done it before.
I believe it only was done under receivership, Madam President.
I'll look for it. I'll look for it now.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks. And I just might add, just based on what I'm seeing in the marketplace right now, now is a very good time to negotiate healthcare. There is a lot of moving parts, particularly in our region. So if done well, we could, we could and should see a cost savings to the city with no loss of benefit for employees. So. Yeah, well, I'll make myself available as much as I can, but I hope with that process because I've started to see some interesting things come out of the market. So I will turn over to questions. Councilmember Bowers?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Green?
No, I don't have any questions on this one. Thank you, though.
Councilmember Mattson?
No questions for me, thanks.
Councilmember Daniels?
Yeah, just kind of piggybacking off of what President Williams was asking. So once we, let's say theoretically do find a good match that meets our requirements of the collective bargaining agreement, what is your, like the timeframe for entering that new contract? Because I know oftentimes there's always like a little conflict between deductibles.
So we would be looking for a 1-1 renewal. That's the renewal date.
What does that mean?
That means come January 1st, 2021.
Oh, one, January 1st, okay, okay. Um, okay. Also, this is, okay, I just wanted that. Thank you.
And council member Majors.
Uh, no, no questions. Uh, councilwoman Daniels asked a question I was gonna ask, so I'm good. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mark. Mark, I, are you in the office uh, the remainder of this week?
Yes.
Alright, I will, I'll shoot an email and figure out when we can connect. And, and have a conversation about it too. Um, but I will uh, move this on to the agenda for um, the next legislative, legislative session for a vote. And we go back to my agenda here. Sorry.
Thank you.
And we'll go ahead and move on to resolution 64 of 2020. Kirk, do you want to read that into record?
Yep, resolution 64 of 2020 is a resolution ratifying the submission of an application to the 2020 Dolphin County Cares Act. Municipal grant program for up to eleven million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and three dollars.
And who from the administration would like to speak to this resolution? Anybody?
I'm so sorry. It took me a minute to unmute. Um, it's Rebecca Volmer here, the grant manager.
Hey Rebecca, how are you?
I'm good, good. How are you?
Good, thank you. Alright, the floor is yours.
Okay, so uh, it's a pretty quick story. So the, the COVID funding is coming down thick and fast through many different tranches and many different directions. So we're trying to keep up with it all. This is the, this is coming through the feds, um, through the state, down to the counties. Some of the state pairs COVID money went directly to counties that have a certain population level, directly to cities like Philadelphia and Pittsburgh. And uh, the rest of it went to the counties themselves and then they dispersed it down into the municipalities within those counties that have uh, less than five hundred thousand population number. So that's kind of where we are in Dolphin County. Uh, we have a very quick window to apply for this. It was about two weeks. Um, we did extensive vetting with the county and with the CED at the state level to make absolutely sure that what we were applying for is eligible. It turns out it is. So what we applied for are regular salaries of our public safety, our sort of frontline emergency workers. And because our fire and police officers are considered because of COVID and the work they do to be uh, emergency responders, their regular salaries and overtime and benefits are all eligible under this grant. Um, there's twenty-five million available for the county. We asked for quite a bit of that. Uh, our, our total was eleven million, one eighty-seven, seven oh three. And the, the application itself is very brief and quick. Um, so I can, it was only four pages long. What we applied for, um, we put in for some PPEs and cleaning supplies that facilities has uh, spent money on. These are invoices that we have not used for other COVID patients uh, to date. That was seventy-five thousand. We put in for some uh, for the, for the police uh, personnel costs, salary overtime, five million, four fifty-five, four sixty-eight. We put in for fire uh, personnel costs, salary overtime benefits, five, five, eight, zero, seven, one, four. Um, and then a small amount for some facilities, uh, again, frontline uh, responder costs given. We, we're making the argument, we'll see if the county will accept it, that our, um, some of our facilities and our person rec personnel are also frontline responders because of the work that they do managing um, events and cleaning facilities. And so they're in, in public with the that they have a lot of face time exposure to the public all the time doing the work that they have to do to keep our events safe and keep our buildings safe. And that was fifty-nine, nine, nine, four. Um, so that people got us to a very large grant ask and we're very much hoping we get a big chunk of that and we'll just see. Um, as Mark was saying before, this is all new territory. No one really has any rules for this. So everyone's kind of figuring it out as we go along. But that is this grant application. It's reimbursement. Um, these are for costs that we have expended from March 1st through December 31st of 2020. So it's a pretty straightforward uh, grant. If we get the money, we just, we, we, um, we'll get a grant agreement. We'll get terms of how we can draw the money down and then we'll just go and pull it down. We'll have to submit um, payroll information and that sort of thing to substantiate the, you know, money that we're asking, but that's what this grant is. Oh, I'm so sorry. Another thing, um, the grant window opened and closed in the time that council is on hiatus. So we were not able to submit um, a request for a resolution before we actually applied for the grant. So that's why we're doing this much actively. So I actually would like to have that very immediately.
Nope, no problem. Under the circumstances, I, I am glad that you did um, in terms of doing it. But uh, it's just so out of curiosity, you know, do you have a sense that if, you know, if they don't give us a full amount, that they will accrue us some amount? Like, I mean, what is your sense of things in terms of how it will end up being awarded? I mean, I'd love for us to get the full amount, but it will be awarded in kind of a de-escalating scale perhaps? Or do you have an idea?
Yeah, uh, yeah, no, I'm glad you asked that question. So uh, my main contact there is um, it's well, it's Brooke Chivariah, who's uh, administering this project and George Connor, obviously. But it's Doug Brown, who's actually kind of the, the mastermind behind all of this. So I, I talk with Doug quite a bit, especially to make sure that police and fire salaries were eligible, because we all thought, when we heard that on the webinar, we were all just like, what? So we wanted to make absolutely sure. So we weren't applying for something that wasn't real. Um, and I asked Doug flat out, I said, listen, we're going to ask for a lot. And is that, should we ask for less? Are we going to look like we're out of touch or we don't understand that, you know, the scope? Um, he said, no, he said, ask for the moon, ask for everything that you can substantiate that is eligible. And they will, they don't have any um, formula like based on population or based on demographics for how they're going to award different municipalities within Dolphin County. And some of their grants do. Some of them are, it's really a formula. So if you have ten people, you get X. And if you have ten thousand people, you get Y. This is apparently not that. They're going to look at everything and evaluate need and importance and sort of, you know. It seems like Harrisburg being Harrisburg and what we do and where we are and the impact that our fire, police bureau have across the region may have an impact, but um, there's no particular special sauce for this. It's just, they said, take everything we have, it's being real and eligible, put it in and they'll give us as much as they can out of our ass. Um, so that's part of the answer to your question. The other part is asking for a lot doesn't disqualify us for anything. It's not, it's not like they'll look at this and say, oh, well, you can only give them two million. So two million out of, two million out of eleven million is nothing. So we're not going to give them anything. That's not the case here. They'll give us as much as they can.
Okay. And my last question before I turn it over to my colleagues, do we have a sense of when we will know?
I'm sorry?
Do we have a sense of when we will know kind of their, our, the reaction to the award?
Yeah, they expect to be uh, evaluating these in September and I think we should know by October. It really was quick and they brought it down. It was a two-week application. We know which is correct, which tends to indicate that they want to get rid of this money as fast as they can. By get rid of, I mean award it to us.
And that award would be, still be within this fiscal year for us?
Yes, we can draw it down as soon as we can. And again, it's for expenses that are, that we've expended already since March 1st. And we'll expend through December 31st of this year. And that's it. So as soon as we, we can draw it down.
Alright, thank you so much. I'm going to turn over to questions for my colleagues. Uh, let's start this time with that council member. Uh, Majors, are you around?
No. Yes, I'm here. Um, before I, before I ask any questions, I just want to talk, make sure I'm, I'm okay to participate in this due to my appointment. Neil, do you think that this would have created any potential conflict due to my appointment with the State Emergency Management Agency?
Unfortunately, it could. I can't tell you for certain, but I, I don't know the full pathway of the money.
Right. So, and so um, with that understanding and since this is something that we're essentially ratifying the the already, the, the application submission, I am going to uh, recuse myself from um, involvement in this, uh, just because I don't want there to be any potential conflicts uh, for me and, and my appointment. So uh, no questions at this time. Um, and I'll further, if we have to go for a vote, I'll, I'll also talk to legal counsel at the Commonwealth to ensure that I can either vote or participate in this um, conversation.
Alright, sounds good. Thank you, uh, council member Majors. Uh, council member Mattson.
Uh, no questions for me. Thanks.
Council member Green.
No, I don't have any questions on this one. Thank you.
Uh, council member Bowers.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for asking the question about the notification period.
No problem. Council member Daniels.
Is there any possibility that uh, the grant turns into a loan or is it just a straight-up grant?
I'm so sorry. Could, could you repeat that?
Is there, is there a potential or possibility for portions of the grant to become a loan or is it a straightforward grant?
I think you're asking if there's any possibility that they will look at our application and say, we'll give you this much for this piece that you said and this, another piece. Like they'll, they'll say, well, you can have this much for fire and this much for police. Is, is that what you're asking?
I couldn't hear any, what you said sounded garbled on my end. So could you repeat what you said?
Uh, sure. I, I just want, I'm trying to make sure I understand your question, whether the, the county may award us certain funds for certain parts of the application, but not for certain other parts of the application.
Oh, no, no. I was just asking if there's, there's any possibility that some of this turns, becomes a loan rather than a grant.
Oh, oh, I'm so sorry. A loan. No, no, no. This is grant, straight-up grant.
That's it.
Alright, thank you. And last but not least, I think I'm back to council president Williams. Did I do that correctly? Did I miss anybody else?
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Rebecca, who would be responsible for submitting reports to the Dolphin County DCEV on a monthly basis?
That would be me and it's on a monthly basis. It's, it's a lot of reporting.
Okay, can we just get a small um, report as to how much we're spending and how, where we're spending it then?
Um, how much we're spending on, on what?
How much we're spending of the grant, where we spent grant on.
Oh, sure. Well, we don't have the grant yet, but is.
I would just like to know what we're spending the grant on, because in some of these areas I see for overtime. But I just want to know how much overtime we're spending. That's a.
Sure, I can, I can send you a synopsis of the grant application and what exactly we submitted for.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, absolutely. You bet, you bet.
Thank you, Mr. Alec.
Alright, I think that concludes questions um, for this. Did I miss anybody that had a question? I think I got through. Alright, uh, thank you so much. Uh, let's go ahead and move this to the next legislative session. And then that will bring us to, I, I would say move to next legislative session for a vote. Um, but that brings us to resolution 69 of 2020. Uh, Kirk, would you go ahead and read that into record?
Yep, resolution 69 of 2020 is a resolution authorizing and approving a senior management consulting services agreement for intragovernmental communications liaison services.
Very well. And do you have anyone from the administration who wants to offer explanation of this resolution?
Yes, I, I'd be happy to present on this. Uh, let me start by saying that uh, I'm sure uh, Ms. Gloria Martin Roberts and her family would appreciate uh, council's thoughts and prayers. Uh, there's currently, she's unable to join us tonight um, due to some family medical issues and uh, um, uh, I'm, I'm sure she regrets not being able to be here. Uh, she also wanted me to make clear that if council has direct questions to her, that she is available to uh, speak directly to any member between now and, and next week. Uh, just a brief description of the uh, contract. It's a pretty straightforward uh, consulting contract. Uh, it has a term that would be through uh, December 31st of 2021. Uh, it is at an hourly rate. The hourly rate is forty-five dollars an hour. The contract is not to exceed uh, seventy thousand dollars over the course of a 12-month period in that contract. Um, the uh, uh, the contract is for an independent contractor, not an employee. So uh, Ms. Martin Roberts would not receive any benefits or um, healthcare or anything of that sort. Um, there is a reporting requirement in uh, the contract, which would require quarterly, uh, detailed quarterly reports. It would be a uh, direct report to me uh, in the mayor's office and uh, it would focus on communication specifically uh, between the administration and city council as well as with Dolphin County and the public. Uh, Ms. Martin Roberts is somebody who I have been interested in uh, bringing into the administration for, for some time. Really, uh, uh, we began conversations as recently as at, uh, at the end of the last mayoral election. We didn't quite have a, a position, but uh, prior to break, when uh, council made it clear that they were interested in improving communications and approved the budget reallocation to fund a consultant position. Um, uh, that sort of set the stage for uh, this possible proposal. I think she brings a, a wealth of experience and uh, I hope that uh, uh, she signals to the public a desire on the part of the administration to have a big tent and to work to uh, bring this community together, which I think is more important now arguably than ever amidst um, uh, the current crises that we are, we are going through as a community. So I think she's uniquely suited uh, for this position, would do a good job. I think uh, the contract uh, has enough um, uh, controls in it that uh, that we, that we are protected and covered. There is a 60-day um, uh, termination provision, so it could be ended uh, early. Um, and uh, with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the one major question I had, I looked over the contract. Is uh, is Gloria going to play a part in, in, I don't know what else to call other than like kind of crisis communications? Um, I know when we initially started having this conversation, we were talking about the importance of real-time information coming to council when there was a situation that arises in the city um, that we want to be informed of.
Yes, that is something that we, uh, that we talked a lot about. And so the, part of the intergovernmental communication is the communication between the administration and council, and that would include crisis and uh, emergency management communication internally. We are also looking uh, forward just as a spotlight for next year. We are looking at some changes in the budget for our communications team more generally. There have been an awful lot of uh, time commitments uh, placed on uh, moment body and uh, and you know, in this age of Zoom and online meetings and organizations, we don't have a lot of capacity. We're looking to increase that. We're also uh, looking to potentially add another position to assist with our 311 um, and uh, public communication. So uh, that's just the larger context, but, but in terms of communications between the administration and individual council members, yes, uh, Gloria Roberts would insist in that. Uh, and I think she'd be uniquely uh, well-suited to do it, frankly, given her a long history of experience and her uh, community connections.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to open up to questions. We're going to start with council president Williams.
I don't have any. I'm sorry.
Uh, moving to council member Bowers.
Thank you. So I do have a few questions. Um, so Mary, you touched on it a little bit, but can we rewind and discuss? Um, how Mrs. Martin Roberts was selected for this role? Um, I know you said you had something in mind, but were you considering other community members?
So um, I, I've met with Ms. Roberts regularly for the past several years, uh, especially in her uh, capacity on impact Harrisburg and elsewhere. And uh, after the last mayoral election about four years ago, I sat down not only with her, but with uh, uh, the other candidates that had run for mayor to sort of talk about their vision and how we could work together in a way that would help uh, bring the community together. It was a um, a, you know, a particularly uh, close race. It, it, it uh, echoed sort of longstanding divisions in the community. Um, prior to, prior to this year, I haven't found the right, uh, the right fit for Ms. Roberts. But again, uh, when we started talking, I think COVID uh, helped uh, basically make clear to uh, to all, all of us that, that we could do um, a better job communicating between the administration and council, especially in a crisis scenario. There's just not a lot of extra capacity. Um, and that's what got, uh, got us thinking about uh, having an independent consultant hired for this position. As you know, before council went on break, we approved money that would cover this position between now and the end of the year. Um, I spoke to Ms. Martin Roberts about it and uh, she was, uh, she was very interested. So uh, that's sort of where we are. Uh, no, I haven't considered anyone else for this position, uh, because I think that Gloria Martin Roberts is the right fit.
Okay. Going back to our communication with Mrs. Martin Roberts. How often, I guess, can we expect to hear from her? Will this be something that we have to coordinate or will there be a set schedule of our communication?
Well, we can work through that and we can talk about what the expectations are, but I, I think in general, she is going to help me communicate with, with each of you, which is can be somewhat difficult to do on a sort of individual basis, one by one, especially amidst rapidly moving events. And is not something which our current communications team is really set up to help with. So I think the communication would be as much as is necessary. And I think she would go a long way to helping improve that dialogue. I don't know exactly how it's going to work. I, I believe she's also interested in, in improving communication, specifically with Dauphin County and the county commissioners. I think there's room for improved communication on, on each of those fronts. I will note that the contract calls for her to be working hourly and to not only, you know, invoice only for the hours performed, but also to have detailed quarterly reports of what she's doing. So depending on how many hours of communication there are directly with council, that would sort of dictate the cost of the contract.
Okay. And then my next question is, under her duties within the contract, it's noted that she would offer input on outreach initiatives and marketing of city initiatives. What did you have in mind and how would she be utilized in those ways?
Well, again, I think that remains a bit to be seen. In addition to improving communication with, with the county and city council, there are opportunities for sure to improve communication with the public on all sorts of different issues. And I think some of that came about through the recent COVID crisis. Some of that is unfolding now in terms of communication of various reform initiatives tied to the Black Lives Matter movement. But I think it, it's a, it's a communications consultant contract by an experienced individual who has a lot of community connections and a lot of experience in Harrisburg. And so I think she can bring those to bear and, and help us sort of bring the community together. It's really, I think, about uniting people and it's uniting them through, through a communications message and strategy that says everybody is included and everybody should move forward together in the changes we want to see.
Okay. And I guess my final question would just be, I guess I'm not clear on her interaction then just still with the public. Would she serve as like an informal spokesperson in times of? I mean, I'm just trying to understand that.
I, I think it depends on, on the issue and on what, what we're trying to communicate. But let's take an issue of, just take off the top of my head, say affordable housing. We're going to be putting forth, as you know, a whole series of different affordable housing initiatives. That may be a task that I help charge her with in terms of talking to stakeholders, communicating, maybe setting up public meetings and public communication sessions in the community all around that overarching strategy of, of improving opportunities for affordable housing. So we'll, we'll sit down together and talk about those strategies. And, but you know, it, it'll be basically in terms of what the priorities are.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowers. Councilmember Daniels.
Do you have any questions?
I'm sorry. I did not quite hear you.
No questions.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Vice President. I, I have a few questions here. So if you could bear with me as I, as I make my way through them. I know this is a 12-month contract.
Little more than that. It, it actually goes through the end of next year.
Okay. Right. An amount to not exceed $70,000 over a 12-month period.
Correct. Right.
So is this something that we're looking to be a long-term position? Is this a short-term position? I noticed that the contract, if it's till December 2021, is this a position that we feel we'll need in the future?
So if you recall, when we, when we spoke before the summer hiatus, we talked about establishing a part-time position, an hourly contracted position for this. And then, and then sort of taking a look at where we were at the end of the year in terms of budgeting for, for, for 2021. I think it makes sense to keep it as an independent contracted position in part because it would be less costly to the city. You're not paying the, the benefits or you know, the healthcare or some of the other things you do for a full-time position. You can, you know, terminate the contract. You can, you can basically control the hours depending on what the needs are, which is a little different than if you have a full-time position. And, but we are going to look, I think, at the overall communication strategy for, for, for next year in terms of communications for the city. And that's what I was alluding to before. I think we're, we can redefine some roles and talk about adding additional capacity so that we have a really robust and strong communication strategy. So I would recommend we stick with, with a a outside contract base position here as opposed to a full-time employee position, at least for now at first. Also, I should say, I think Ms. Martin Roberts, she's not here, but I think she was not interested in, in a full-time, you know, employee position. And, and so this, this also sort of suited her. And you know, that's where we are. Could we change that in the future to become a full-time position? Maybe. I mean, that's something to discuss in the future.
All right. Thank you. I, I guess my, my point to that is that this is something we should be building capacity for. Even if we are looking to do it on a contracted basis, we need to make sure we're planning future for this as well, because this isn't just an issue that popped up during COVID. This was something that was brought before the hiatus because we wanted to increase our communications specifically between council and the administration. That's one. Two, as you noted, this is something we said we would budget till the end of the year and then review, but this contract is until the end of next year. Therefore, it's encompassing the 2021 budget. Why is it extended to that time?
Well, technically, we would also budget for it in the budget. And then you, you would control the budget process too. So if you felt that you did not want to budget for it for, for 2021, that would still be in council's prerogative. But it just seemed sensible to have a, a, the ability to have a longer-term contract rather than just a short-term thing through the end of the year. So we would vote on this now, then we would vote on a revised budget for 2021 and which would also include some other changes to the communications department. So council would essentially get to look at, look at the larger issue of communications. And I do agree with you. I, I'm not, I did not mean to imply that some of the communications issues just materialized with COVID, but I do think COVID sort of exposed them in a way that, you know, was, was, was something that we needed to address. It really showed a lack of capacity in some, in some areas that you know, that's, that's why we're taking action now.
All right. Just on a more of a comment than a question on, on this one. I would appreciate if when we are crafting positions or contracts such as this, that we do reach out to our community to get their input, because I'm sure there are plenty of members from our community that feel that they could have filled this position as well, or at least would have liked to have the opportunity to have input or even be considered for the position. So that's more of a statement than a question there. I think it's something we need to be cognizant about, especially as we look to be a transparent. You know, city and administration and city council, we need to make sure that we're having these conversations in public all the time. We have public meetings. We have the ability to reach people digitally. We need to make sure we're having these conversations in public just to ensure that there is no image of not being transparent. So that's, that's more of a statement than a question there. Back to the question.
Yeah, let me just comment and say, no, I, I understand that. I would just say that I think, given Ms. Martin Roberts' experience as president of council and her, her sort of long and distinguished career of, of community service here in Harrisburg, I really felt that she was very well-suited for this position. And almost uniquely suited, which is why I think she's the right fit now.
Right. I, I don't doubt, doubt the fact that she is qualified for the position. My point is more communication transparency, having the conversations in public. I believe in having those conversations in public rather than behind closed doors, because the public pays the bills, the public puts us in our positions and the public deserves to be able to hear the conversations. So the fact that we're having it tonight is very important that we're asking these questions, that we're putting it forth. But you know, just, it's, it's a very important role. It's a public-facing role. It's going to be direct interaction with the public with city council, with the administration. So we need to make sure we're just getting the public's input on it. Just because, you know, so many times I've heard about what previous administrations did and how they did things behind closed doors. And there's always comments about it, even from members of our current administration. And we need to make for sure that we're putting everything out there in front of the public, having those conversations and being transparent and giving everyone the opportunity. Everyone deserves opportunity. Because the city's been around for many years, so there have been many presidents of council. There have been many people that were on the, the board of controllers, you know. So let's have these conversations just to make for sure everyone knows what's going on. Everyone feels included. It's, it's the reason why we had the town halls, because it's not our job to just make the decisions for people. It's to make the decisions with people. So that's just, that's just a point that is very passionate to me. I want to make for sure I get across. And I want to make it very clear, you know, Ms. Gloria Martin Roberts isn't on the call. And this is in no way doubting her abilities or her qualifications. I believe she's very well-suited for the position. But it's not my job solely or council's job solely or the administration's job solely to just make the decisions without consulting the people who put us in this office. I mean, I think that's something that we heard constantly throughout, throughout the town halls, is that we want to be involved. You know, like it's, it's get the opportunities to be involved. So we need to just make for sure we're providing the opportunities, any chance that we get. So back to some of, some of the questions that I had. I believe this, this position originally, when we talked about it before hiatus, was to fill the position of a community, community communications liaison between, specifically we were talking about between city council and the administration. So craft this job description or this contract, because it's technically not a job description. Because it seems like some of it incorporates policy consultation, consultation. Even in the actual contract itself, it says that they will assist with strategic policy development implementation. And that doesn't exactly seem like the role of a communications liaison.
Yeah, it definitely expanded beyond, beyond what we were originally discussing before, before break. But that was in part due to Ms. Martin Roberts' input and communications when I talked to her about the position. I think that she, I think that she is particularly well-suited to also serve the role of helping improve communications between the city and Dauphin County. And while we didn't discuss that before break, I think that could, that can certainly be a component of, of intergovernmental communication. So I think, I, I think she will do a good job with that. With regard to public communications, that really is, is at the direction and supervision of the mayor's office. So it really depends on jointly, and I include council in this, the, the overall strategies that we'd like to see more community engagement with and more conversation with. So that may include policing reform. I talked to Ms. Bowers about how it could include affordable housing, but it may also include helping assist in the larger outreach regarding police reform and, and public safety reform in the city. So it would be at the direction, at, at, at our direction and, and, and requested as needed.
Okay. So it will be requested as needed by the administration or by, or by both or?
I'm happy to accept the input of council, but ultimately the position reports to me as the mayor. So I would work with all of you on, on talking about ways in which we can improve communication. I mean, that's the point. It's really to build bridges and to improve communication. But, but in terms of the actual management of the contract, I would manage the contract. That's all I'm saying.
Right. I did, I did note that the direct reporting would be to the mayor, which I'm, I'm not going to say it concerned me, but it, it brought questions as council was the one who requested the communications liaison position. And I just want to make sure that that doesn't interfere with the communication. We, we want to make for sure that we're, we're getting communicated with and not just communicate what you would like for, to be. I mean, I don't want to sound like badgering or smart, but I want to make for sure that like there is actual communication, like sharing of information back and forth. And the fact that we need someone to share that information to me is standard. But I believe when we first had this discussion, we were talking about in more of a, a time of crisis when time was of essence, not just a general communications manager, because honestly, that makes it sound like the administration and council can't talk to each other, which I, I hope that's not the vibe we're putting off to the city. But I thought this was more of a crisis management, a time-sensitive management thing, but it seems like this is incorporated into. It almost seems like it's, it's been incorporated into a senior management position that's similar to the one that you turned into a part-time position a few years ago on the budget. And I don't think that position ever got filled after that. So my question would kind of be like, if we cut this out of the budget and then we kind of, we, we incorporated a, a communications liaison to help with crisis management and crisis communication. But then what comes before us is something that's crafted, that looked like a senior management position that we cut a few years ago, because you said you thought that the role wasn't a necessity at that time and we could save money on it. And then the, the, the amount budget over a 12-month period is more than a part-time position. It's more of a, you know, the, the cost of a full-time position would cost us for someone in a senior management position. So I, I guess I just have questions about like, how do we get here? What's like, what is your vision for this position for the city? How was it fulfilling the position, the, the vision that we put forth months ago, which was a crisis management communication liaison? And not someone who's helping to, to craft policies and, and do our, our community outreach? Because I mean, we should be able to talk to the community. Right? We should be able to show up to events. We should be able to have this. We, I mean, we've got, we've got people who manage our social media. We've got all these Facebook, Twitter's and tweet about everything else. We should be able to get the information out. And it's always wonderful to have more members of our administration and people who are assigned to get communication out and really have that direct connection. But why can't we talk to our county commissioners? Why can't we talk to our state reps? We have, don't we have someone who's like on the books as a? Look, it's kind of slipped my mind. We, we're paying someone a contract to like work with the state reps and work with the county commissioners, right? We have, come on, somebody, a lobbyist. We have a lobbyist on the, on the books, but it's kind of like we're, we're hiring someone to communicate for us. But we have a communications manager that was very clearly made a communications manager and not a communications director, which would encompass more responsibilities and allow him to have someone below him as a manager. So I mean, I'm, I'm probably talking kind of fast here because I'm, I'm a little passionate right now, but I just, I understand the qualifications Ms. Gloria Martin Roberts brings. And I don't want that to be taken as that I don't understand the value that she will bring to the city. My question is, what are we looking for out of this position? Because what we put forth was a crisis communication, communications liaison, but what we're getting is a senior management consultant contractor. And I don't think we have a senior management consultant as a contractor. Those are just some of my, my opinions there. I'm, I'm sure I said a lot and I have a couple of more questions to ask. I don't know if you want to say anything before I move on to my next questions or if we just want to leave it at my comments.
Yeah, I, I would just say the explanation is it has, it has, it has grown in terms of concept in part because of the strengths that Ms. Martin Roberts brings. So you could define it as something more narrow. And, but, but, but I thought, given her interest in the position, we could actually broaden it to, to reflect some of her other strengths. It's not that, it's not that we all don't communicate or we aren't all communicating on a regular basis. It's that we can always, we can always improve and we can always build capacity. And especially in times of crisis with so much going on, it's nice to have additional focus and additional capacity at the city. You know, here we are applying for $11 million in CARES Act funding with the county. That's a, that's a, it's a pretty big ask and it's a very important thing. It, 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 it doesn't hurt to have somebody with, with, you know, experienced connections there assisting us. So it's true that it is expanded beyond what we talked about, but I, I don't think it's, it follows necessarily though, that it's not also going to be able to do what we talked about. So it's really just a question of as, as a city, do we feel comfortable with this? And I can say I do. And I can say I do because I think it brings added capacity to the city and it helps us. I think collectively get our message across and that's partly due to Ms. Martin Roberts and her experience.
All right, I just have a few more questions and I promise I'll pass this on to someone else, but I just feel a couple of things need to be asked. So one another question is, where is the reporting to city council? So I noticed that there's reports being done, I believe they're being done for for you. And given to you, where's the reporting to council?
So it was important for a contract like this, and I'm glad we're having the conversation, but very important to have a reporting component. And that is, it's important that you see that Ms. Martin Roberts understands that. We decided quarterly because that didn't seem overly onerous, but it could also be sort of substantive and big picture in the reporting. Even if it doesn't say it in the contract, I'm happy to share those reports with city council. And I'm also happy to make sure that Ms. Martin Roberts is available to, you know, to speak to council specifically at council's request on on whatever issues. So I do see the reporting as reporting to everyone, not just reporting to me. And so I can make that commitment to you here tonight.
I appreciate your commitment, I would like it in writing and that's just more of a formality thing. Because if we're signing a contract, I believe that it should be the contract itself. So if there's a quarterly report being done, I believe it should be even if she reports to you verbally and we get one in writing, however you choose to do it.
No, it would be in writing, it's not a it's not a verbal quarterly report, it's a written report. And I have no problem sharing that report with council. So we can, you know, we can add that in, that's not a problem.
All right, thank you for that. Another question, why are the goals and objectives to be achieved being crafted after the contact after the contract is signed instead of stating them before the contract is signed?
Because, you know, the priorities shift, circumstances change and you can't always anticipate. You know, imagine us trying to have anticipated this past year back in March before Black Lives Matter, before COVID. We've talked about some of the priorities which are on both of our agendas, police reform, affordable housing. Those things won't shift, but we want to keep it broad enough so that if individual, you know, issues arise, we can we can address them. That's why the contract's general, but the the actual tasks would be specific and the reporting would be specific to those tasks.
All right, I'll just say say this before I could support signing this as is, well, I couldn't support signing as is. I would need some basic objectives at least written into the contract. Because I don't want this just to be a wide open thing where it's kind of like, you know, I'll assign what I feel like assigning to her, which will be your prerogative, not city council's prerogative. Especially as you talk about, you know, it could incorporate police reform, it could incorporate public, you know, not public housing, but affordable housing. It can incorporate a number of things. And I think that's something that council should be abreast of. Not that, you know, you assign this task and okay, Ms. Gloria Martin Roberts works on it under your orders. First of all, that doesn't sound like much of a communications liaison, it doesn't sound like much communication at all. But I just want to make for sure that we have some basic understanding of what we should expect out of this contract. I don't like signing vague contracts because vague contracts lead to vague results. And as a city, especially during the time that we're going through right now where I mean, at all times, every dollar counts, when you're going through a crisis where we're projecting budget deficits and as we're looking to, you know, 2021, we're looking to see more more losses to the revenue we're bringing in because of the impact of COVID-19. So I would like things to be spelled out just a little clearer. And this has nothing to do with who the contract was, it's the fact that it's a contract, a legally binding document between the citizens of Harrisburg, you know, represented by the city and a contract. And we need to make for sure that we are keeping everything in writing, we are being very clear on what we want. We can't have vague contracts, I mean, it just doesn't make sense. We don't want to get into a situation where we find ourselves with one expectation of what we're going to get and what's delivered is different, but technically it meets the contract because the contract is so vague. And I think we need to make for sure we're doing that in every contract we sign, not just this contract. And I can't agree with signing something that I don't know what it's for. You know, it's kind of like we have some general ideas, but it's it's quite vague. As you stated, it's completely evolved from what we originally discussed before we went on hiatus. So I when the idea was first brought to me, you know, I had a phone conversation with with President Williams and she was, you know, kind of giving me a little bit of information about about the the conversations that you all had and and wanting to bring Ms. Gloria Martin Roberts along as our communications liaison. So I did expect more from the administration when it comes to what's actually in writing. I expected things to be a little more detailed. I expected them to be a little more concise into what we asked for in a crisis communication liaison. And my fear is that without certain things in writing, the actual crisis communication liaison portion of this is going to get lost in translation. Because it's like there's so much in this, you know, there's so much that can be done with this position, it is more of a senior management position. There's so much that can be done with this position that crisis communication will be at the bottom of the list. You know, if you're working on policy and strategic implementation, if you're communicating with our commissioners instead of us communicating with our commissioners or our mayor communicating with our commissioners. If you're communicating with the state reps, with the community, if you're doing marketing, if you're doing all these different things, crisis communication is, you know, it's it's just kind of by the wayside and that was the entire point of us for this position. So I'll go ahead and pass it off to some of my other council members here, these were just some of the questions that that I had as I read over this contract and thinking back to what we originally asked for. So in order for me to support this, a couple of things, I need some more specific information. I need a little more of an explanation as to why we're contracting out a senior management position while we reduced that position in our budget. I need some more information on how we plan to build capacity in this position to ensure that it's around long term. Whether it's Ms. Gloria Martin Roberts or 50 years from now, whoever would, you know, have that position as a crisis communications liaison. How are we going to build that capacity to make for sure it's built into our system itself? Long after you're gone, long after I'm gone, we should be building capacity for our system, for the citizens of Harrisburg for now and in the future. And then trying to think, oh, I would also like for this contract to end the end of this year and then to be renewed for a one year period. If we so see it for a one year period, it could be a six month period. But as you said, you're bringing forth some changes to the communications department structure. And I'd like to see how this fits into it, I understand that we have the prerogative to vote on the budget and allocate and not allocate funds depending on how we see fit. But I'd rather not sign a contract for something that we don't know how it's going to fit into the future structure of our city and how we set that up. So those are just some of the questions I'd ask that that are addressed by whenever this goes on the the agenda, whether it's next week or following legislative session or whenever it is. I'd ask that you address those questions beforehand. And I mean, we can address them, I will prefer them to be addressed in writing that way, it can be referred back to. And in case, you know, it needs to be referred back to or if someone wants to to see it in writing like a member of the public, because once again, that's who we really answer to. Thanks for indulging.
I don't know if I can address those questions beyond what I've already said here tonight. The it's the the contract sort of is what it is, this is the the public vetting process. I regret that Ms. Martin Roberts isn't here to speak for herself, but in terms of the contract, it's not a employment position because I think I think there's a savings to be had from from not making it a sort of full time position in terms of the overall structure for communications, I will present that with the budget for next year. And, you know, theoretically, you could defund the this this contract if it was not working out the way you wanted to see it. And fundamentally, it is about improving communications between the administration and council, which admittedly, the proof will be in the in the pudding. But Ms. Martin Roberts would not be communicating anything, which wasn't something that was a sort of mutually shared desire to be communicated. That's at least how I envisioned the position, but I hear you, I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying that the the contract is what it is in part to give a measure of flexibility, so I'm not sure we can address all those concerns.
All right, so you're saying that the the scope of the contract cannot be narrowed. The scope of the contract cannot be limited to end this fiscal at the end of 2020 and then renewed for 2021 if we so please to make for sure it fits in the the new structure of communications department. Those are things you're not willing to do.
If you had specific language that you'd like to see included in the contract, I'm happy to consider it and potentially support amending the contract to include that language. I'm comfortable with the contract that is as it is here, so I'm not going to be proposing that specific that specific language. But if you propose something to me, I can certainly discuss it with Ms. Martin Roberts and we can look to do it, I think that's possible. I would not recommend limiting the contract to only three months, I don't think that's really worth it for the city. I think it's too short a period of time. I think the fact that we have a 60 day out if we're unhappy with the contract is good enough. So I think 15 months or, you know, is a is a more appropriate contractual time. So I don't agree with only doing it as three months, but I did give you the the caveat of you control the budget for next year. So that is, that's always there as a backup. So, you know, we can discuss them one by one, but that's how I would respond to those.
Well, thank you for your responses and your opinion.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Vice President Allen.
Thank you, Councilmember Green, Councilmember Majors.
Yes, so I think Councilwoman Green made a lot of comments and statements that I I agree with. But oftentimes, I think we confuse or conflate the person that's we're looking to bring into a position with the position itself. So with respect to consulting services, do we normally put those out to bid when we are looking to acquire them? Or do we just allow for discretionary selection of independent contractors with the city?
Well, we wouldn't we wouldn't have to put it out to bid, I would say the the position and the individual are elided in this case, in part because of the particular skill set that Ms. Martin Roberts brings. And if Ms. Martin Roberts were not available, I think we would be looking at a different a different framework and a different contract. So I'm not prepared to separate the, you know, position from from the person in that sense. I think I think it was crafted and and the position was expanded based on her skill set.
So I'm talking about in terms of her practice with the city, so do we just allow for consultant contracts to be done without a formal bidding process?
Yeah, we don't have to have a formal bidding process, if Neil wants to address that, he can.
So we are not required to have a bidding process for professional contracts, except in some very narrow parameters. For example, under the the debt service policy that was adopted by council has some parameters in there for certain professionals. But that's why it comes to council, that's the public process. So the context that we look at as if there's a bid process, for example, that's the public process, council lots of money. The project is put out for bid and the project is bid on with those parameters financially. And the contract goes forward, when there's not a bid process, it comes to council because that's the public process versus a bid process. And we do do some RFPs or the hybrid of the two.
Right, yeah, okay, so, all right, understood. So since we aren't, since we are not considering differentiating the position from the individual. I know one question that I have is, so in terms of potential conflicts of interest and this individual serves on several boards and or commissions in the city, particularly Impact Harrisburg, does this position that she's taking represent a conflict between her being able to have a contract with the city and also serving on the Impact Harrisburg Board?
So I don't see a conflict, I suppose there could be a conflict, but I don't see it. And if there were one, then she would have to recuse herself from from it at that time. But I can, Neil can speak to, I guess, as the head of Impact Harrisburg if if he felt there was a general conflict with serving both the city and Impact Harrisburg.
So Impact Harrisburg is probably the most unique constructed organization I've ever heard of because it came from a court order from a public transaction. Everyone who was originally on the board was nominated by a public official appointed by the state. And unlike most boards, had to have a connection somehow to the city of Harrisburg, including myself, there were two other employees. Ms. Martin Roberts was nominated by the county at that position, the city council nominated members to the board. And it was a total of, I think, originally nine total members. In theory, depending on if there was different money involved than the original money that was the seed money from the parking agreement, then the conflict question arises. I will note when when it was being considered whether or not Impact Harrisburg should have a second round agreement based on other money, CDBG money, I had to recuse myself because it was completely outside the scope of any of the things that existed during the Strong Plan. So I had to recuse myself as a board member and as a lawyer participating in either direction on that agreement. So a conflict could arise, it just would depend on the specifics of what it was. So if she was advocating for a particular financial arrangement between the city and Impact Harrisburg, it could arise, just like it could arise for me again, if a different conflict arose. I'm not sure, Mr. Majors, if that answers your question.
I guess somewhat, but not really, so I guess I'll have to look at it, the Impact Harrisburg requirements again, because again, I think we constantly, it feels like we're we go back to a lot of the same players to serve on a lot of the boards and commissions. And to me, again, it feels like there could be an inherent conflict with a contractor for the city serving in that position when her job is going to be to be a liaison between the city council and the county. But I guess that's my personal belief. So it's so serving in a communications role between the administration, council and Dauphin County. To me, it feels like this is a, you know, a lot of this seems akin to a lot of the language that was in the lobbying contract, so would Ms. would she have to register as a lobbyist working with in any of these these positions since it's, it doesn't seem like it's not going to be limited to those, so she could potentially serve as a liaison and communications liaison between us and our state representatives. You know, understanding we do have a current lobbying contract with a firm, does this potentially put her in a position of being a lobbyist?
Neil can answer the specifics of that, I would just say that our Mavrick contract is state focused and federal focused to some extent. It's not county focused and so we specifically mentioned the county in this, given Gloria Martin Roberts' connections there. And so I think there's added benefit. But in terms of the general, the general question of who has to register as a lobbyist, I will yield to the solicitor.
Mr. Majors, my answer is, sitting here, I don't know the answer, I can find the answer. There's always a theoretical possibility of that when you're going from one public body to the other, but it really, you have to drill down into the the Lobbying Act itself to do that.
Okay, and to another point that Councilwoman Green mentioned, yeah, a lot of this seems like internal communications, right? So internal governmental communications, what does any outreach from this position look like to the public? Or is this solely a? Or is this solely a uh, in, internal position uh, and/or marketing position? So is there any communication that she will be dealing to, to the public?
Yeah, she uh, for instance, she may be tasked with uh, establishing uh, town hall type meetings, community uh, conversations or you know, stakeholder, smaller stakeholder meetings, depending on what the task is. I mentioned uh, affordable housing as a, you know, a possibility. But yeah, it is contemplated in this contract that uh, she could set up um, you know, panels or other types of community uh, outreach. So um, that's just, that's just one aspect of it. But uh, the, I see it as a, a sort of triangular uh, communication strategy between uh, city council, the administration, the county and, um, and with, with the sort of public at the heart of, of all three of those.
Okay. But again, to Councilwoman Green's point, um, are, one of the focuses that I think a lot of us wanted to do was to be able to have a position um, that would help us with our, our communications uh, outreach to, to the public. And I think to, to your own admission, uh, we are current communication staff. While they're, they're great, they are, uh, I think they're a little stretched right now, especially in light of COVID and how we've had to um, become a little bit more flexible. And uh, you know, some of the original job description, they're, you know, they're going above and beyond to ensure that, you know, we're able to do all these uh, virtual town halls, virtual meetings, et cetera. So uh, in terms of, still in terms of day-to-day communication to, to the, the residents of Harrisburg, what does that uh, look like? How is that, how is this position contemplated in any of that or is it, it not?
Uh, well, I, I'm not sure. Uh, first of all, I'm not entirely sure if uh, your vision uh, coincided there with uh, Councilwoman's uh, Greens' vision for what council wanted in terms of communication. I know that some on council wanted uh, a stronger emergency communication between the administration and council, not between uh, the administration council and the public, but really an intercommunication when crises were breaking or uh, current events were happening. So I think that's part of it. But I would like to see uh, uh, stronger uh, communicative outreach to the public. I'm sure that additional uh, uh, communication capacity that Ms. Martin Roberts would bring would be, would be useful and beneficial. Our current communication team has a lot on their plate. It takes a lot just to um, uh, to, to run uh, a, a town hall or to help publicize the town hall. Ms. Martin Roberts could actually uh, do more in terms of soliciting uh, uh, you know, panelists and um, doing outreach with community organizations to uh, uh, encourage attendance, things like that, which are based on uh, her community connections uh, more so than just a sort of general uh, communication strategy. But I, I was sort of a, a, a general answer. But I, I, I think there's, there's definitely a lot that we can uh, improve upon and we can draw upon her skills and her connections to make our events even better.
Okay. And then uh, so for this position, uh, what is the vision for the uh, the amount of, you know, work? Was it, whether it's uh, on a weekly basis, the number hours? So you know, just doing the basic math, looking at how many hours, uh, you know, at $45 an hour, and $70,000, I could say it's right around 1,500 hours of work, about 41 weeks of work um, contemplated if we're doing a straight 37 and a half hour work week. So what does, you know, are we looking at, you know, are you contemplating, you know, on a, on a regular basis, like an average? Since this is, seems to be, you know, you know, she, she provides you with her, her, her hourly work. Are you envisioning like, you know, 10, 15 hours a week? Are we looking, I, I just want to envision, what does it look like on a, on a regular basis, this, this position? Sorry for being long-winded.
No, I, I think that's fine. I think it would depend on uh, what the, what the specific charges are. I don't think it would exceed uh, you know, 30 hours a week on certain weeks. It's, it's not meant to be um, a, a full-time, you know, uh, uh, constant position. Or we would have it not as a contracted service. We'd have it as a, as an actual um, uh, city uh, e- e- employment. But it's supposed to be task oriented. So uh, it, depending on uh, uh, what the need is at any time, that'll dictate the hours. But we're going to have bi-weekly invoicing. So the way the contract works is it's $45 an hour, um, and then there's a cap, a not-to-exceed cap, which you, which you've mentioned. So really, there's flexibility in there to be anything from, you know, a few hours a week to um, 30 hours a week. It just, uh, it, it, it depends on what the need is.
Okay. Yeah, I think uh, yeah, no further questions at this time. But uh, what, what also, you know, our, our, our prayers are with uh, Ms. Martin Roberts and her family right now. But I think uh, you know, prior, just as one councilperson's uh, perspective, prior to moving forward on the vote, I definitely want to, want to have a conversation with uh, Ms. Martin Roberts. So that's it. Uh, no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Majors. Uh, last but not least, Councilmember Mattson.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, so I, I have more uh, practical questions. A lot of my questions were already asked by my colleagues. So for example, over the weekend, we had the tragic uh, incident with uh, Kayon King. And a number of council members were invited to a candlelight vigil. I know that uh, often how we hear about these events are either through social media, word of mouth, maybe a text or a phone call. And then sometimes, you know, it may be difficult for uh, a, a council member to attend or even the mayor to attend, and then folks in the community get all frustrated because there's no one from the city representing them. It would be nice if this person in their role uh, could spend some time with trying to gather that information or in conjunction with the administration and council. And that way, we could all kind of be on the same page on what events are happening, what the expectation is for the organizers of the event. So that way, if it's a, if there's multiple events, uh, then we have one central person we can talk to who can kind of help us figure out where we should go strategically. I would really like to see somebody in this kind of role doing that. And then if for whatever reason, a council member couldn't attend or a uh, city official outside of this person, it'd be nice if they could speak on the city's behalf. Because I think sometimes folks get frustrated if they don't see our, us present at important events. Now luckily, uh, you know, a few of us were able to make this event. But I know, for example, there's this uh, march um, uh, at 18th and Forster at 2:00 PM. It's Labor Day weekend. You know, I could easily foresee uh, an issue while I do plan on attending where a lot of uh, elected officials may be away that weekend on vacation. There's nobody that attends and the, or the community gets upset because there's not someone representing them. So I guess that's kind of more of a statement than it is a question. But I guess uh, would appreciate the administration's feedback if this person in this role or Ms. Roberts would uh, be willing or could that, we could build that into their contract.
I would say that's definitely an area uh, where I'd love to see improvement as well. You, you bring up the vigil over the weekend as an example. And that's something that I didn't find out about until about a half hour before. And uh, it was already uh, committed at that point. I had no idea that that was going on. Um, I don't know when you found out about it. I know you were able to attend, but I'm agreeing with you 100% that it would be helpful if uh, if invitations like that or events like that, once somebody finds out, if we had a sort of central uh, clearinghouse whereby um, you know, the rest of council could be informed and the administration could be informed or vice versa, depending on where the information's coming from. Ultimately, uh, that I think was organized by the school board. And uh, I don't know if they had any particular, you know, they, they clearly didn't have a formal strategy for inviting uh, members of uh, the administration or city council to the event. But um, uh, I think that this position could assist in that. And it could certainly uh, you know, uh, in, inform other council members when uh, an invitation like that is received so that everybody knows about it and it's not, uh, not just some. I think, uh, I think you're right in pointing to that.
Thank you. Yeah, and again, uh, I think it would be good just for the public's benefit. Well, I know we're all pretty much familiar with the Ms. Martin's uh, experience and knowledge. But uh, maybe perhaps if she could come, I don't know if this, this uh, resolution will get put up for a vote next week. But if she is able to attend, and maybe we've done this before, where we sort of just pause and break out so that she can answer uh, questions from council uh, for the benefit of the public. And maybe we could reopen it for a final vote. I'd very much appreciate that, just for the public's uh, benefit to uh, hear her uh, answer some of council's questions. Uh, and
And just for the record.
That is it for me.
I certainly feel you should hear from Martin Roberts. And she had every intention of being here tonight, uh, were it not for the family emergency. So uh, I am hopeful that she'll be able to attend on Tuesday. Uh, and uh, you will hear from her in person. That was, it was never the intention to not have her participate in this.
No, I understand, I understand that she had the family issues. Uh, I think it's important that if we put her up for a vote, that she, she make it a best, a good effort to attend next Tuesday so we can um, interview her, or not interview, but ask her questions.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you. So um, thank you for everyone for the input on this. I am um,
Could I make a request? Neil, would it be possible to get an ethics opinion on the appointment uh, before the hearing, before the next meeting?
It, in terms of answering uh, Councilman Majors' question or a different question?
This, the, the question about whether she could be appointed, meaning that she's on the board of an organization that distributes.
Yeah, I, I, I can't issue that because I'm on the board as president. So, but I can, I can assign that to someone.
Yeah, but we can ask the State Ethics Commission to give an advisory opinion.
Oh, I see what you're saying. We could, we could put a question over to them, yes.
Have you worked with them? How quick are they in their term of time?
In COVID land, I really don't know. I don't think there's anyone physically in the building. So I, I just don't know.
Okay, I think she's done. Question, so you, uh, Neil, you will uh, look into that for us?
I will, and, and I will, in the, in a room, if I can get a timeline from them, I will do that.
All right, well, I will, I will reserve judgment putting this on the agenda for Tuesday's vote specific because I feel like there's some outstanding things that need to happen. I'd encourage uh, my colleagues who raise some very good points, I think, of consideration that we should um, you know, take into at least under advisement. But I think in a situation like this, if there is specific language in the contract that we would like to see, if you want to send that out to us so we can review um, propose this potential amendment to the contract. But I will reserve judgment at this point as to whether or not this will be able to be put up on Tuesday, pending some of the outstanding things that we might want to have uh, responded to um, on that. So I will conclude um, my committee uh, business. Council President Williams, do you want me to do public comment or you want to move into that?
No, uh, Mr. Allen, I think we have another um, piece of legislation that we'd like to uh, to introduce. We just got it, we would like to discuss it and it's in um, Councilwoman Bowers' committee. Councilwoman Bowers, you want to discuss that piece of legislation tonight?
Thank you. I would, I believe Mr. Manns is on the line and I don't know, I I am. Okay, not sure who will be speaking on behalf of the city. So this resolution, everyone, does not have a number yet. If we're going in numerical sequence, I think would this be Resolution 70 or am I wrong to note it as such?
It would be 70. We have 60.
It would not be 70 yet, Madam President, because it's not.
Not yet? Okay.
It, it's a, it's a, it's a proposed piece of legislation for discussion. And then it would be introduced on Tuesday and assigned at that time formally.
A number. Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Manns, would you like to provide an overview of this?
Sure, thank you, Madam Councilwoman. And, and uh, good evening, uh, Madam President and other council members. Thank you for having us. My name is Sinwar Manns. I'm the Chief Executive Officer with the Harrisburg Housing Authority. I have also two other uh, members of our team. Well, actually, there are more than two other members because the city hopefully is a part of this team as well. But, but two of the members from the Harrisburg Housing Authority side of the fence, so to speak, are with me also on this Zoom call. Adam Rosa is the Principal with Calabo. And then uh, Sheila Gray, who isn't, isn't showing her video, but she's on this Zoom call as well. And she's Harrisburg's, or she's the Housing Authority's um, Development and Revitalization Manager. About a month and a half ago, the um, the US Housing and Urban Redevelopment Department had, Urban Development Department had released a notice of uh, funding opportunities for availabilities for their Choice Neighborhood Initiative Planning Grant. And um, as most of you probably know, we have, for some time now, we've set our sights on the south side of Harrisburg, in particular, the Hooverter Homes and Hall Manor um, area for some type of full-scale renovation and redevelopment. The Choice Neighborhood Program, for those that, that are familiar with the program, is ostensibly a community revitalization program. It, it's, it's a um, a, a second generation, if you will, of Hope 6, the, the old Hope 6 program. The Choice Neighborhood Program, however, involves uh, more broadly, the community with the public housing uh, apparatus being sort of the focal point or the core point of it. So um, so HUD gave us roughly two months to come up with an application that um, is competitive and um, and hopefully, of course, successful. Unfortunately, it is a competitive process. It is one that um, they're only going to receive, or they're only going to award 10 grants, 10 grant awards nationally. Historically, for the, the larger grants, not the planning grant, but the implementation grant, which is what we're going to go after subsequently. Historically, it has been the larger cities that have been able to receive these grants. Philadelphia has received some Choice Neighborhood Grants and Pittsburgh has received a, a Choice Neighborhood Grant. But we think that it's time for Harrisburg to get a little bit of that love. So um, so what we plan on doing is going through a planning process first, which is the first grant for uh, an, an ask of $450,000. And uh, then it'll take about two years and I'll have Adam talk about that process a little bit more clearly and more uh, specifically. But it'll ta- it'll give us uh, about a two-year planning period in which uh, once we uh, coordinate that planning process and, and uh, and complete that planning, planning process, then that'll put us in a position, hopefully, to make our ask for the implementation grant, which is the $30 million ask. And then, of course, we leverage that $30 million against other, other sources. And so, so with that, I'm going to uh, introduce Adam Rosa, who's going to give. Since we know that council has been uh, on this Zoom call for a while, I'm asking him to give you a brief presentation. And so uh, so Adam, if you can uh, provide a little bit more context, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely, and I, I really appreciate you having us here tonight. I know that the discussion has gone on for a few hours. So I will try to keep it to about a five-minute uh, presentation. Then I want to have opportunity for questions after that. So I'm actually going to try to share my screen and I guess I need, it needs to be enabled. Am I able to do that? If not, I can just, I can just.
Go ahead, you should be able to now.
Okay, thank you. Great. All right, so as Sinwar mentioned, the, the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative, it's, it's really a two-step process. The first step is, is this uh, Choice Planning Grant, which is due in about two weeks. So we're, we're kind of in the home stretch of putting our application together. And then uh, once, once you go through your two-year-long planning process, you're able to then apply for that implementation grant that could be up to about $30 million. So that's, the Choice Program is really focused on the, the three core elements of people, housing and neighborhoods. So it goes beyond just the brick and mortar of traditional public housing and reinvestment in a program like Hope 6. It really broadens it out into the uh, the surrounding community. So at the center of that effort, you have the revitalization of the target housing site. In this case, it'll be the Hooverter Home site that we've identified. And then you have the opportunity to work with partners to identify a series of neighborhood improvements in the surrounding community, along with the people projects, the education, the economic development, the arts and culture projects that are going to help connect people to opportunities. So I've, I've personally had the pleasure to, to serve a number of different Choice Neighborhood grantees over the years. Many of them are shown on the map here, not only as the grant writer, but as the, the lead planner uh, conducting the process. So I have a pretty good sense of the ins and outs of the program. And I'm, I'm really looking to help the Housing Authority and help the city put the best application forward and get, and get this thing funded. So the the planning area, as we've defined it, is is essentially the South Harrisburg community. So it's everything south of the Capitol Beltway, all the way to the city limits, as you can see outlined in blue. So it includes not only the HHA Hooverter Homes target site, but it also identifies the the Hall Manor site as part of the larger community. And then there are several other affordable housing apartment complexes, the Harrisburg Park Apartments, Ivy Lane Apartments, as well as more of a mixed, single-family neighborhood to the north. You can see a number of the other assets that are identified throughout the area. So this neighborhood as a whole contains about 5,500 residents and it is located in an opportunity zone. So we get we get a couple of bonus points for that in the grant. So we need to show in the grant that Hooverter Homes property is essentially obsolete and distressed. And you can see by some of the pictures here that it's essentially it's it's beyond its its lifespan and really should be redeveloped. It was built in 1940, so it's it's really one of the oldest public housing sites that I've been a part of through through my career. Has about 233 units of housing. You could see some of the the conditions of the building, some of the open spaces on the property. The critical thing with Choice Neighborhoods is that the plan that we produce over the two-year-long period, it'll look at replacing the very low-income units, one for one. And that can either be done onsite at Hooverter in the Hooverter Homes property. It can be done in that larger Choice Neighborhood, South Harrisburg footprint, or it can be done in other areas of opportunity within the city. But the key is that it has to be part of a new mixed income developments. So it's not just about rebuilding public housing. It's about doing it in a mixed income fashion that really enhances the life of the residents. And the image shown here is from is the first phase of new housing that was part of the Choice Neighborhood Plan that I worked on in Rockford, Illinois. So this is also an asset-based process. So thinking about not only the challenges in South Harrisburg, but what are some of the building blocks? Like the new affordable senior housing development in Paxton Place, the commercial areas, the Capital Region Green Belt Trail, the homes and businesses on Paxton Street, the different churches. We want to make sure that we're able to build upon all of these assets and but also help to meet the challenges by directing resources into the surrounding neighborhood. And the Choice Planning Grant, it's going to be a $450,000 grant overall to conduct a two-year-long, very comprehensive planning process. Of that $450,000, we can dedicate $150,000 to what they call an early action project, which is something that gets the ball going, gets the ball moving and builds momentum for greater changes in the surrounding area. This is going to be a resident-led process. These are some of the folks that I've worked with through Choice Neighborhoods over the years, not only engaging kind of the usual suspects that'll come out to a community meeting and sit in on a three-hour-long city council meeting, but also working with the younger folks in the neighborhood to really understand what what they want to see and in thinking about the the vision as it relates to their lives. We have a really distinct opportunity through this to set aside a portion of our budget in the grant for to hire community ambassadors, which would be liaisons that would help us with engagement, help help to build empowerment and help to build the champions for the overall plan. These are some of the ambassadors that I worked with personally in Brownsville, Texas. And they had received an honorary kind of award from the City of Brownsville for all the great work that they were able to do on that planning process. So as I mentioned, early action, here's a couple of examples. On the upper image is from Huntington, West Virginia. There was a vacant home in the neighborhood that was owned by a prominent African-American activist from the the 60s and 70s. And we use our early action funding to restore the home and begin to get it ready to turn it into a community center and a neighborhood museum to celebrate African-American history of the city. The lower image, the image on the lower right is a park within the Choice Neighborhood in Brownsville that was kind of a no-go zone. It was an area with had a lot of drug dealing and the homeless folks would spend a lot of time there. So we used early action to activate the park, bring free Wi-Fi to the park, little free library in the park, better lighting in the park, and using that as a centerpiece for how to really catalytic improvement for the surrounding area. So as Singor mentioned, at the end of the of the rainbow, as you could say, would be a larger Choice Neighborhood Implementation Grant. And I was able to work on the the Choice Plan in Flint, Michigan, which was awarded the $30 million Implementation Grant in 2018. They've been able to leverage that grant to begin to build the new housing and to implement all the great programs throughout the neighborhood and to really create those supportive services to improve the quality of lives for the local residents. So the process that we would go through over that two-year period is outlined here on the screen. So it really begins with listening and learning, moving into the visioning for the future, establishing that early action project, and then developing the strategies, the programs, and projects that are going to make it a success. So this will not just be a Housing Authority plan and it won't just be a city plan, but it needs to be a very comprehensive effort where we're bringing in all sorts of different partners to help implement the actions that are going to help revitalize South Harrisburg. So it'll all come together in the draft plan with the people, housing, and neighborhood elements. And then, as I mentioned, we can use that plan to go to the next step for an implementation grant. But I really want to stress that the plan itself and the process you use to get there can really build incredible empowerment among the local residents. It can really help stitch together the partners to create some really catalytic change in the community. And it can lead to implementation efforts, even if you don't get that $30 million grant down the road. So that is essentially where we are today. The Harrisburg Housing Authority will be the lead applicant on the on the project. We're asking for support from the city as a co-applicant that is really going to help show that we have a strong commitment and a strong connection with the local government. We've also identified, you know, we have a whole laundry list of partners that are putting in support letters for the overall effort. And, you know, I guess I'll just leave it there. But again, I just wanted to thank you all for for hearing us about this approach. I'm willing to answer any questions that you may have about the program or what where this may lead to in in South Harrisburg.
Thank you. I see Ms. Watson is on the line. Did you have any input you wanted to share on behalf of the city?
Good evening, everyone. Well, we are very excited about this opportunity. We have had an opportunity to actually meet with Singor and with Adam and the team. And also, different employees from the city have met because we think it's a great opportunity and we felt like, you know what, we need all hands on deck to make sure that this thing happens. So that's what we've been trying to do, like whatever it is that they need, we want to provide. The mayor is all in. We are all in and we are excited about this opportunity.
Awesome. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to open up the opportunity for my colleagues to ask some questions. So we'll begin with Councilwoman Green.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bowers. I don't have many questions. I'm still kind of, you know, listening and absorbing it all. I I think it's a great opportunity. I'd love to see it come to fruition, especially living right around the corner for pretty much my entire life. I see the the major improvements that are needed. I could provide probably some some more pictures if you need them. So some of the improvements that are needed. I spend a lot of time in the neighborhood just talking to different people. So I really see the opportunity. I thank you all for for going for this opportunity. And I'd love to meet with you just to listen to more of your vision as far as a long-term plan for Harrisburg Housing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Green. Let's see. Vice President Abbott, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I think it sounds really exciting. So I think along with everybody else, really kind of excited and curious to see where all this goes. So I will leave it with that.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Major.
Yeah, sorry. No, absorbing all of this, this is a great that we're looking to explore this as a a potential funding to help us improve our our housing to residents in the city of Harrisburg. So just, I guess, to recap, you're asking for our our support. In terms of timeline, I think, reading through some of the material, I think you have a September 14 timeline to get everything in. Is that correct or am I?
That's correct. Yeah, they HUD HUD gave us only two months.
Okay, great. Yeah. So, no, I fully support this project. And the city's willingness to be a part of improving our housing stock and making other affordable housing opportunities available for residents. So anything that you need from us, as Councilwoman Green mentioned, if you need any additional photos or anything, we'd be more than willing to help. And if we can connect, help you all to try to connect with folks that are in those communities to really help display the need for some changes in the homes. We're more than willing to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels.
Sure. So just to be clear, of the $450,000, about 150 will actually go to some some of the actual renovation. The $300,000 go to that two-year planning process.
Yes, so I can answer that. So the the $300,000 would go towards the planning process, as you said, over the two-year period. And that can be used in a variety of different ways, including those stipends for the community ambassadors. The 150, it would not go towards renovation of the existing public housing site. It would go towards a neighborhood improvement that would benefit all residents of South Harrisburg and be something that would show positive momentum, so a physical improvement. And we've been thinking about a few different things that we could potentially utilize. But that that's what they refer to as an early action project. And it would also be something that we could potentially leverage other resources on top of to get even more bang for our buck, while also inviting the community to help volunteer to help carry it out. And that's something we would do probably during the first year of the planning process.
And then the ultimate cost of the project will be determined during that two-year process as you're figuring out what you want these new developments to look like and where they're going to be located.
Yeah, that's right. So we would go through a series of different concept designs and alternatives envisioning with the community to look at the different positives and negatives of different approaches, whether it's keeping all the housing on the site, looking at other areas in the in the neighborhood that are publicly owned, where we could potentially build mixed-income housing, or other sites within the city where it may be appropriate. We're also going to conduct a market study as part of the the effort that'll help to guide some of those decisions.
At this point, do you have an estimate of how many counts ambassadors you think you'll have?
Oh, I would say anywhere between five and 10 ambassadors. And we would like to have some from the public housing and some from the surrounding neighborhood. And that's something, you know, it'll be, once we get the grant, we'll be thinking about putting out almost like a job posting that can be passed out to different members of the community. We'll want them to to essentially apply for the position and be committed to being an ambassador for the the life of the for the two-year-long process.
And do you anticipate the relocation of tenants within that two-year period?
Not during the two-year period. The two-year period is really just for planning. So no, no physical construction of the public housing would would occur during that period. But what we would do as part of our housing plan is to create a relocation strategy for how best to deal with that, whether it's phasing on the site or looking at off-site locations. The idea is to really make sure that we have the least amount of impact on the negative impact on the on the lives of the residents so that they're able to stick around, they're able to come back to the the revitalized housing. And that really is done through the individual conversations with families and creating that structure through the relocation plan.
And it's been, correct me if I'm wrong, but they believe the relocation funds are always like a separate pot of money. So that money will be there. Have those funds reduced? Have they increased? I mean, is it pretty guaranteed that the relocation funds will be there regardless of what form we're able to raise the money for for the project, for the rest of the for the actual project?
Yeah. Singor, do you want to hit touch on that one?
Yeah, it is. The funds have not been identified, but the funds must be identified at the point that we go through the relocation. So pursuant to the Uniform Relocation Act, we must pay for the relocation costs for the residents and then give them the opportunity they are entitled to return. So we have to actually pay for those costs as well, the the cost to return those residents to the to the community. And so so right now, as as Adam suggested, this this is, these are just planning dollars that we're we're trying to achieve or receive. But we would actually separately identify the the relocation dollars. And and we we have a couple of, we have a number of different sources from which we can pull those relocation dollars.
And was I wrong? Were there relocation funds in the past that were kind of always there and now they're gone?
Well, I I don't know which grant you're referring to. If if we're talking about the the implementation grant, then we could, we surely could pull some relocation dollars from the implementation grant. But this is the planning grant that we're referencing right now. HHA has the the flexibility with some of our other grant sources to allocate relocation dollars, no matter what what the the program is. If it's public housing oriented, we could actually put relocation dollars into that that program. But we have not made those those allocations at this point. We have not set that money aside.
And this is probably getting like ahead of things, but will you all be assessing like the 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 soundness of the ground that these things could happen? Because I'm I'm a little worried that that 14th Street sinkhole is a bigger deal.
Sure. Yeah, we're we're mandated to go through an environmental assessment. So we have, we have a lot of work that we're going to have to do to assess the 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 structure below below ground and whether or not there's any kind of deficiency in the the building foundation for us to rebuild on on those sites. And and this does, although we've targeted Hooverter as the target site, we are talking about Hooverter and Hall Manor as a part of the revitalization and redevelopment process.
And I'm just another question. So we have that pool, the city pool right by Hall Manor. Do you see like a potential partnership with, because we haven't been able to open the pools. And obviously, COVID has changed a lot. But do you see a potential partnership for like investing in, like we're investing in that? I mean, I know it's a huge expense for us, but.
Yeah, we had some brief conversation about the pool. Unfortunately, we did not, we we understood that there might be some kind of survey or study that's undergoing or or maybe it's going to be occurring in the near future. And so we looked at the pool as a potential early action item or activity. But because we knew that there was also some discussion about, I think, the potential for other types of activities, not just the pool, but but I think there was some talk at one point or rumor about a water park of some sort. And so we 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 heard that there was some kind of study that's occurring or will occur, may occur. And so we 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 decided that until that happens, we probably shouldn't even open up that can. But, you know, we're, of course, as the city is a partner of ours or will be a partner in this project, we're going to be very open to all manners of of ideas and concepts and programs that we can put together for the community in that area.
Yeah, and I will say that as part of our process, we're going to be breaking out into a series of five or six different working groups with different partners. And one of those groups will surely be focused around parks and open space. So hopefully, we can kind of connect in with the larger city process and come up some really unique solutions around that topic.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Matson, do you have any questions?
No questions for me. Most might have been asked, but I am excited about this project and learning more about it.
Okay, thank you. Finally, President Williams, do you have any questions?
No questions but a statement. I just want to thank Mr. Manz.
No questions but a statement. I just want to thank Mr. Manns and his partners, uh, for your passion and vision for this project. So many years I've traveled in other cities and public, uh, housing have, has been renovated. And I've come back to you. We've talked about this so many times. So I'm just delighted to see that this is finally happening in the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't have any questions. I guess just commentary. I share everyone's excitement. Um, similar to Councilwoman Green, I reside in South Harrisburg, so I'm super excited about this. Can't wait to hear what your prospects are for the early action project. Um, maybe we can get a sneak peek. Community ambassadors, I love the idea of bringing in, um, residents. I think a nice mix, as you mentioned, of, um, residents of, of the, um, the affordable housing communities and their neighborhoods. I think it would be a great mix. Your, your photos in the project really just excited me because I think, um, there's a lot of possibility, uh, it, within our community. And, and this will give us a great opportunity to really tap into it. So I would like to thank you guys, uh, for all of your hard work thus far, um, and the work that you will continue to do. Keep it in prayer that we will receive this grant and thank you, Ms. Watson and all other, um, members of the administration who have participated on behalf of the city, um, in getting us to this point. So I would like to move forward with the formal introduction of this resolution, um, next Tuesday due to the time-sensitive nature of the application deadline of September 14th.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bowers. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, before we do public comment, Mr. Petraskey. I lost you.
I'm here.
I lost you.
Amanda, can you hear us?
I can hear you, but wait, but I lost everybody. I moved my, oh, here we go. Okay. Sorry. I moved my computer and it went off. I'm sorry. Uh, before we begin public comment, I just want to make a statement. I appreciate and respect my colleagues' questions and concerns regarding Resolution 69 of 2020. I want to assure the residents of this city that there was certainly no cronyism associated with the mayor's selection. As Ms. Green stated, I reached out to the council members prior to receiving that legislation because the mayor made me aware of what's coming down. Ms. Roberts is a friend of mine and cronyism, as some of you who may not know and some who know, is the appointment of friends and associates to positions without proper regard to their qualification. Well, I certainly had no interaction in the selection of Ms. Roberts and certainly she possesses the skill-based experience qualification for this position. To address the transparency, this council has always been transparent and we certainly will continue to be transparent to reassure the residents of the city that we are doing the right things and making the right decisions. Thank you. Now we'll move on to public comment. Mr. Petraskey, is there any public comment?
Yes, we have, uh, two, uh, submissions for public comment. And the first one is, uh, submitted by Amanda Arbor. She lives at, uh, 15th and Derry Streets. She had questions regarding the mid-year budget, uh, three questions. One, she wanted to confirm is there is no current hiring frees in place for the city and all departments are allowed to actively recruit and hire for vacant positions, she said. Is that correct? Number two, to clarify, she said, I understand that you're not in a position to project for 2021, but you anticipate there being some level of cuts required for the 2021 budget. And number three, if cuts are needed, what factors will the administration be using to determine in what department line items cuts will be made and at what level? Uh, the second comment was submitted by Ernestine Crankfield. She writes, will there be any investigation into the altitudes of repeat violent sex offenders that have been released into Harrisburg neighborhoods? These violent offenders are living near daycares and schools. One man sits on his patio, plays children's songs to entice them. They're being released into a program right across the street from residential homes. In light of the recent murder of a six-year-old, I'm wondering will anyone, anything be done to protect us? Today, a young lady posted about a man hanging around her air for two days. He comes and goes, but it's always early in the morning. When she tried to question him, he pretended that he did not speak English, but others who were aware says he does. When the police were called, they said, when there is a problem, they will come, but refused to come out and investigate why a man is hanging out around even after the incident just happens. And that is all for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Petraskey. Any other information or questions, concerns, council members? Here and now, we will end the work session of September the 1st, 2020. Everyone have a good evening.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Yeah, good night.